Are you ready to rock there? Yes, okay, so I'm calling this meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Sado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Rios. City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Here.
Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members, $790 monthly, regardless of the amount of meetings.
Thank you. We do have open session agenda items. Item number one, please.
The city council will issue proclamation declaring November 11th through the 15th, 2024 as law enforcement records and support personnel appreciation week.
Okay, so we do have this proclamation as for law enforcement records and support personnel appreciation week. November 11th through the 15th, 2024, whereas the protection of California's communities is dependent not only on the men and women who devote their time and energy to the duties of law enforcement service, but also on members of the support staff such as law enforcement records and support personnel who devote countless hours to performing the duties that keep our law enforcement agencies running smoothly. And whereas law enforcement records and support personnel. Okay? Everything okay? Okay, so I apologize for that. Play a crucial role in helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process those suspected of breaking the law. And whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience to assist in tracking felons, maintaining criminal statistics, and improving apprehension strategies. And whereas it is important to recognize California's law enforcement records and support personnel for their valuable contribution to law enforcement. And now therefore be it proclaimed on this 12th day of November 2024 that I, Gil Hurtado, mayor of the city of Southgate, to hereby declare November 11th through the 15th, 2024 as law enforcement records and support personnel appreciation week, signed by myself. Any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add a few comments to our records and support personnel. They really are the unsung heroes of our organization. What police officers do, what traffic officers do, what dispatchers do. It really does go through records and our support personnel. They're an integral part of our organization. We can't do it without them. And I think we sometimes, things run so well that we forget the work that they do, but they are very instrumental. And I'm glad to see that I have a handful of them here tonight. They know that they are important, but I do want to recognize them and really thank them for what they do for our organization. It's not just, you know, the command staff or the chief. It's the people in the organization that make this place great. So thank you, ladies. I really appreciate everything you do. Lieutenant Amador oversees them and he'll say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So I oversee, or I will be overseeing, the detective bureau. And under that umbrella falls the record bureau. But here today, I'm actually here on behalf of Manuela Rodriguez, our records manager. She wrote something short that she wanted me to share with you. I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to the mayor and the members of the city council for this meaningful proclamation, recognizing records and support personnel week. Your support and acknowledgement mean a great deal to our team. This week's an opportunity for us to spotlight the hard work, professionalism, and essential contributions of the women in our records bureau. These ladies are the critical behind-the-scenes employees that work on keeping our police department running smoothly. I will always say that our record bureau is the backbone that supports every aspect of our operations. Our team works 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, including all holidays. Whether it's New Year's Eve, the Fourth of July, or a quiet Tuesday morning, our records bureau is there, processing documents, maintaining accurate records, and ensuring that everything flows smoothly. These tasks handled by our record specialists are vast and vital. They're responsible for processing everything an officer generates, from prime reports and citations to warrants and incident reports. Our records bureau also manages a front counter every day from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., providing vital services to the public, whether it's retrieving reports, answering questions, or directing people to the resources that they need. It's not just administrative work. Our record specialists play a key role in maintaining safety and security. When a female arrestee is brought in and there are no female officers or custody officers available, our record specialists step in to perform the critical role of matron to ensure proper searches and assist with the booking process. This is a unique and often overlooked responsibility that requires not only professionalism, but also a deep sense of duty and respect. Thank you, and we'll continue to work together to make our community a safer, stronger place.
Thank you so much. So let's go on up there for a photo. Yes. Okay, we do have a second item, but we're going to be taking that one up after a closed session. That's okay with everyone? So let's do closed session.
Conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Agency representation is Rob Houston, city manager. Employee organizations are Southgate PMMA and Southgate MEA. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Yeah, we're doing two.
I'm sorry. Consider the evaluation of performance of a public employee pursuant to government code section 54957. A city manager.
Any additional comments? Okay, let me open this up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on these two items?
All right, Mari Dominguez Jr., 10607 San Miguel Avenue. Okay, so I'm back for round two of the beratement of our city attorney, Raul Salinas. So at the last city council meeting, I went into how I'm not happy with the performance of our city attorney. And I laid out my reasons as to why I think he's a hack. And by a hack, H-A-C-K. If you look at item two, consider the evaluation of performance of a public employee. So once again, Mr. Salinas doesn't give us a summary or any indication as to what item two is or items pertaining to his office. And it says, "A city manager." Well, I don't get this. I mean, the city manager signed a contract with the city, so you know, what is there to discuss with the city manager? I mean, he's locked in for what, another three years? And the thing I want to say about Mr. Salinas, and this, well, you know, I don't think what I'm asking for is outrageous or out of line, just for the city attorney to contribute to our proceedings and give us the settlement and payouts for the lawsuits that are against the city, these legal disputes, and to make it available to us when the mayor goes around asking department heads for reports and updates. This is the time when the city attorney should be disclosing the dollar amount for these payouts and settlements. And let me remind the council members, the residents of Downey don't pay for these settlements or lawsuits. The residents of Linwood don't pay for these settlements or lawsuits, nor do the residents of Huntington Park. They don't pay for these lawsuits or settlements. It's us, residents here, the folks here in Southgate. And when I asked Mr. Salinas, so you know, where does the money come to pay for this? And he said, "The general fund." Oh, really? The general fund? Our money? Our general fund money goes to pay for these settlements and lawsuits. And you know, the thing is, you know, back to the term hack, you know, the only other puto in this city that half-assed their job as much as Mr. Salinas, and I would say even more so, is our former city treasurer, Greg Martinez. Greg Martinez, that puto, half-assed his job so much that he made beach bums look good. So when I say hack, I mean, this is someone who does the bare bones, minimum amount of effort in doing their duties, in doing their work for the residents. And as evidenced here, you can see, item number two here, there's nothing here. No summary, no indication as to what item two is. So my question, Mr. Salinas, is what is item two all about? And again, I'm sure he's an all-star back there when, you know, he's dealing with, you know, brokering deals and negotiations. But out here, like I said at the last city council meeting, with us, the residents, the man is trash. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? See no one step forward? I'm going to close the audience portion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, first of all, Mr. Dominguez is in Toto's opinion, but it's a, I think it's a sincere opinion, but it's a misperception, and it's not an informed opinion. The Brown Act has what they call safe harbor provisions. The Brown Act tells cities, this is the format you should use. And if you use this format, you're compliant with the way that these items should appear on the agenda. And so the way that we format our agenda is consistent with what they call safe harbor provisions. We, if you actually go onto the Brown Act and you take a look at the statute, it actually tells you how to list it. It tells you, list the evaluation of performance, discipline. We're not disciplining the city manager. We're not terminating the city manager. This is the time of the year where we get to evaluate performance and provide guidance to them. And so we're using the proper format there. It's not a question of shortchanging the residents here. It's really complying with what the Brown Act says we have to do. And I would encourage Mr. Dominguez to take a look at the Brown Act before he spews out things at the microphone that are just wrong and they're false. And these things have to be called out as being wrong and false because we have to maintain the integrity of what is true. And what is true here is that these agenda items are compliant, and we are following the legal format there. We also are not allowed to provide more detail when it comes to employment matters, whether it's the city manager, city attorney, police chief, because these are all employment-related items. And under California law, we are precluded. We, all five of you, have to maintain the personal confidential information of the employment relationship. So again, I want to defend what the city is doing. I don't really care what Mr. Dominguez thinks of me. I care about whether the city is complying with state law, and we are, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to list these items because that's what state law requires us to do. Thank you.
And I appreciate you explaining that. I explained it at the last meeting, and I think this is going to be something that's going to go on. And I don't know what it's going to take to convince them. If it was something that we were going to be able to address, we would have just held the meeting out here publicly and then don't have to report back on it. So again, they're legal matters, and they require some confidential discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Back. Give us a second or...
All of you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In closed session, the City Council had a conference with labor negotiators to talk about ongoing negotiations, a report on the negotiations with Southgate's PMMA and Southgate's MEA bargaining units. That, those negotiations led to what will be on item number two of the, of this agenda item, and there's no reportable action taken in closed session on that topic. And then we had on item number two, the evaluation performance of the city manager. We received a report by the city attorney and by the city manager on process, and upon completion of that, there was no reportable action taken. No other items were discussed in closed session. That completes my report.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the audience. Anybody wishing to speak on the items that were discussed in closed session, you're welcome to do so at this time.
All right, so let me take another crack at this with Mr. Salinas. So regarding item two, if you could, I know you just stated what it was, but could you repeat and just give me a bit more detail here? Because there's, again, there's nothing here that states what item two of the consideration of the evaluation of, of a public employee. Really, what is this? If you could just tell me what this is about? And so let me understand this, Mr. Salinas. You're telling me that the Brown Act, you want to comply with the Brown Act, and you're doing, the city's doing everything in accordance with the Brown Act with regards to, you know, how this is formatted and the information you're providing us? So you're telling me that the Brown Act prevents you from disclosing the payouts and settlements when the mayor goes around during the department heads asking for their updates? You can't even, at that time, once the matter has been settled and resolved, the legal dispute, you can't announce, okay, this is lawsuit A, and here's what they were suing us for, and here's the payout. Even then, you're telling me the Brown Act prevents you from stating what the, you know, what the payment and settlement is? And the thing I want to say to the council members is, you know, Mr. Salinas, you know, we pay him very, very well. He gets paid a very good, good sum of money by us, and for him not to tell us what, you know, the payouts and settlements are, I mean, that is just pitiful. I mean, I don't understand how, why the council members are so complacent. People are so fucking complacent with how things are done here, and that you're willing to abide and just settle for this mediocrity from Mr. Salinas in, in terms of giving us the residents this information. I don't think I'm being out of line or asking for too much and just ask, just asking the city attorney to tell us, you know, how much we're paying for these lawsuits, and considering also that it's coming out of our general fund. It's our money. It's the residents' money that, you know, we pay in taxes, and I think we're entitled to know this. That's all. taxes, and I think we're entitled to know this. That's all.
Any other speaker at this time? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the audience portion.
Yeah, again, Mr. Mayor, I thank Mr. Dominguez for his comments. Just going back on the language where it says, consider the evaluation performance of a public employee. I don't really make that language up. That's not my formatting. That's a formatting that the state has said to cities. You follow this format, you're going to be in compliance there, and so we do that. And why does a city, why does the state allow a city to do that? And that is because the city council gets to hire city manager and gets to hire the attorney. Those are the only two hiring decisions that the city council makes here. The city is considering the performance, the annual performance of the city manager. It's what businesses do in the private sector. It's what cities do in the public sectors. They evaluate the performance there, and they provide guidance. And it's not uncommon on a regular basis for a city to provide guidance to the city manager so that there are, there's consistency and alignment between the city manager and the city council. Those items are covered as personnel-related. They are confidential, and we're due bound to maintain the confidential nature of that. It's the same in the private sector as well. So all we're doing is complying here. Mr. Dominguez brought up something unrelated to these two items, and that has to do with the reporting out of the city settlement agreements. And so it's not on the agenda here. I would just briefly say that we do disclose that. It's disclosed in our budget, in our warrants. When I reported out, I don't have a signed settlement agreement. The other side could back out, and so it's inaccurate to say that a case X settled for so many dollars. And our practice here is to disclose it, and how do we disclose it? It's always in the warrant run, and it's part of that. I just don't have the ability, as we are structured now, to be able to say, hey, the city settled for a case for X dollars. Because at the time that we received approval from the city council, we're still involved in negotiations. So I just, I want to make sure the public knows that, but also where the public can look for those information, that information about our payout. It is public record information, and any resident should be able to get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to open session, item number two.
The City Council will consider, A, adopting a resolution approving the Southgate Municipal Employees Association as Southgate MEA, MOU, and the Southgate Professional Midmanagement Association, Southgate PMMA, MOU, for the term July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and B, authorizing the mayor to execute the comprehension, comprehensive successor memorandums of understanding in a form acceptable to the city attorney.
Okay, any additional comments?
Certainly, if I could. Mayor and council, I appreciate that we're at the end of a long journey that was passionate and hard, I would say fought, but also the conversation was tough in the sense that we had passion from our employees looking for compensation that they felt that they needed to, for their coming year, and that was a good discussion to have and needed to be had. And our council, this is my first time being a negotiator for a council, our council had a lot of conversations internally to think through how to balance the value that they have, which I could see is great for our staff and myself as well, and also with the realities of the resources the city has that has to be shared, both for the employee salaries, but also for the services that we're providing to the community and are required to provide to the community with revenues that aren't sufficient to fully be able to fund all of that. And so that, that's a tough conversation, and it took a while, took a number of months, but I really appreciated seeing the professionalism that occurred from the union side, from the council side, seeing the ability for the two groups to land on a place. And often it's said in a good negotiation that both sides had to give a little more than maybe they had originally on paper, but they came together, and we have a deal. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and the union groups. Thank you to the council. Thank you for the Southgate team coming together, and I appreciated working, representing our council and seeing the tough conversations and the unity that came for the offer that we have before us. So thank you for that, and I look forward to having this behind us and move on to working together to continue to make the city better.
Thank you. Let me open this up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add something to what the city manager said is that I think it's important for the public to know that the city council did take these negotiations very seriously, that there was deliberate intentionality. There was clear guidance was provided to the city manager and the negotiation team. There'd been some comments, I think, along the way in the public setting, that somehow the council did not die you, the workforce, the employee workforce. I didn't see any of that at all. I felt that the council was always trying to do right by its employees, consistent with the fiscal limitations that the city is facing. And we got stellar input and advice by the negotiation team that extended to John Hamilton and extended Wendy O'Kelly, city manager, the outside council, Colin Hall, that was involved in these negotiations. And so I think it's important that this product, the public know that this product is reflective of a team approach by the council to do right by its city and by its residents. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so let me try this again. I'm going to open it up to the audience again. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. Let me bring it back to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Estado?
Absolutely, yes. And I want to thank everybody that participated and made this happen. It was a very challenging thing and very challenging times, but as always, I think, you know, the relationships that have been built throughout the years have allowed this to go in the direction that it did. So again, I'm very grateful to our employees for being patient. And again, sometimes it might have appeared that it was taking longer than what we wanted, but it got done, which is the important thing. So again, I want to thank everybody involved. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We've got a motion. I'll second that. Seeing no opposition, we're adjourned. Let me know when you're ready for the regular council meeting.
Ready, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm sorry, it's going real slow on my screen. I'm doing this on purpose so you can take a slow walk up here. I know this thing's taking forever. Okay, I'm sorry that took a while. Okay, invocation is going to be, oh, hang on before we do that.
Yeah, let me go ahead and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Avalos. I'm going to make the announcement for the Spanish translation. I almost forgot what I was going to do. But si hay alguien que necesita traducción en español, tenemos audífonos. Alguien necesita traducción en español? No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got this. Pastor Nick Garifee, welcome back. And who's in the pledge of allegiance? Nally. Welcome back, Nally.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful for your love and grace. And Father, we thank you for our great nation, the United States of America. Lord, I just pray that you continue to bring unity, Father, throughout this country. And Lord, thank you for this city, Lord, and I pray, God, that you continue to bless this city. It's a pleasure to know that my granddaughter is learning what she needs to learn in school, God, and that I can walk around the park being safe and just walk at night to be safe. And that's not the case in a lot of cities. So Lord, we just ask that you would continue to bless the city of Southgate, the leadership, and Lord, we're grateful in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Estado?
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Present.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Barron?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
The City Treasurer de la Paz?
Present.
City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas?
Present.
Okay, so what we're going to do first, and we're going to take some things out of order, but we're going to do the...
Meeting compensation disclosure?
Oh, my bad. Yeah.
Pursuant to government...
We're going to do that first. It's an important part. We don't want to miss that. Yes, go ahead.
Pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly, regardless of the amount of meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
And I apologize for, it was my confusion there, because we had that previous meeting, and she had already made that announcement. So it's still the seven ninety even that we're having two meetings tonight. Okay, good. All right, so we're going to take some things out of order, but the first thing we're going to do are comments from the audience on non-agendized items. If you have a comment to discuss on anything that's not on the agenda, please do so at this time.
Can I go?
Yes.
Okay, so as we all know, we had an election, and I can't tell you how bummed out I am that I was rooting for this one individual, get on the council. And if you recall, the last city council meeting, I kept saying that all our city council members are a bunch of lame-ass bucks. Well, it turns out, as you know, because of the election, the way it turned out, you know, another candidate who's had like, I don't know, was it 20 years serving on the city council, you know, this person got the majority of the votes from the residents, and because of this individual, the one that I was rooting for, that I desperately wanted to be on our city council, isn't going to be there because this one beloved individual who got all the, who got the majority of the votes, who served like 20 years on our city council, is not going to be able, allow this other individual to serve. And what kills me is that this individual ran with the two most beloved council members and still couldn't get his ass on our city council. I don't know, you know, how we're, you know, in future elections, how we're going to get someone new on our council. If you can't run with the two most beloved council members and still not get into, voted onto the city council, what, you know what that tells me? It tells me that it isn't just the council members are a bunch of lame-ass fucks. No, it's us. It's we, the people. We're the lame-ass fucks. We, the residents, we're the lame-ass fucks because we can't get our act together and vote someone new on our city council. And, you know, I, you know, what I would, my wish would be for the vice mayor to do what Biden did and step down and allow Fran Vicardaron to take her position. That would be my wish. I would love to see him on there. He would be a marvelous addition to our council. And honestly, I just can't tell you how much it saddens me and disappoints me that we couldn't get this guy on our city council. And again, I don't know how, going forward, how, you know, any change is going to happen. And yeah, let me just end by saying, fuck the runners. That's all.
Thank you for the kind words. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening. My name is Ruben.
Como ustedes ya saben, tuve problemas con Johana.
As you all know, I had some issues with...
Pienso que saben quién es Johana, ¿verdad?
With Johana, and I think we all know who Johana is.
Por hacer su trabajo incorrectamente.
For doing her job the wrong way.
Inventó códigos, se inventó unos códigos por su propia cuenta.
She said to me some codes on her own.
Sobre mi trailer.
Related to my trailer?
Yo no, yo no podía ni tener, que yo no podía tener mi trailer en mi propiedad.
That I could not have my own trailer in my own property?
Me generó mucho estrés.
This generated a lot of stress?
Y había veces que no podía ni dormir.
And there were times when I could not even sleep?
Estuve a punto de vender mi trailer.
I was very close to selling my trailer?
Y he estado con este problema desde agosto 14.
I've had this problem since August 14?
Nadie me ha dado ningún resultado.
And no one's given me any results?
Quisiera saber cuáles son sus soluciones que ustedes me han dado.
And I would like to know what are the solutions you've given me?
Yo tuve un meeting con Campana.
I had a meeting with Campana.
Houston and Johana.
Houston and Johana.
Y era, fue un caso perdido.
And it was the last case?
El señor Houston lo más protegía a ellos.
Mr. Houston would only protect them?
Yo ya iba con perdido, ya iba todo lo que decía Johana.
I was already at a loss?
Él, él, él decía que sí, estaba bien.
Because everything Johana would say, he would agree with?
No sé por qué, al saber Houston este problema...
I don't know if Mr. Houston knew about this problem?
Porque no habla con, porque no se juntó con la señora, con señorita murder.
Why didn't she, why didn't he get together with?
Para ver, el código ese, si existía o no existía.
Whether or not that code existed or not?
Ese código no existe ningún, en ningún, de lo que ustedes tienen.
That code does not exist in any of the books that you all have?
Porque ella se inventó ese código.
How did she come up with this code?
Y qué vamos a hacer sobre ese caso?
And what are we going to do about it?
El señor Houston...
Mr. Houston?
La protegía. Los protegía él y a Campana.
Was protecting them?
Siempre, siempre los protegía.
Always.
Sabiendo que estaba un código mal hecho...
Knowing that that code was wrong?
Todavía los protegía.
Was still protecting them?
Tenemos que hacer algo al respecto.
So we have to do something about that?
Porque a mí me hizo mucho estrés.
Because this caused me a lot of stress?
Cada uno de ustedes.
I will leave this for each one of you?
A este momento, no he tenido ninguna solución.
To this moment, I haven't gotten any solution?
Qué vamos a hacer sobre el código que se ha inventado?
What are we going to do about this code that was invented?
Hay que ser transparentes.
We need to be transparent?
Que quiera trabajar aquí, que se vaya, que no trabaje aquí.
The ones that don't want to work here, they shouldn't be here?
Porque no está bien esto que están haciendo, que hicieron con mí.
And it's not right what they're doing, what they did with me?
Es personal.
It's personal?
Porque esta señora Johana fue tres, cuatro, cinco veces a la casa.
Because this lady Johana went three, four times to my house, and every time she would go, she would bring out another new code?
El código que se inventó fue para, para hacerme daño a mí.
The code that she made up was to harm me?
Tuve que hacer muchas cosas, deshacerme de carros, que yo no estoy, yo no tengo ningún problema con los coches.
I had to make a lot of changes. I had to get rid of a lot of cars?
Pero cuando ella empieza a hacer que quiere estar arriba de la ley...
But when she started wanting to be above the law?
No está bien y no está bien.
That's not right?
Y especialmente el señor Houston, que los protege.
Especially with Mr. Houston that's protecting them?
Hay que ser, hay que ser transparentes.
Let's be transparent.
Si ella es un error, se entiende.
If she made a mistake, that's understandable.
Pero dos errores?
But two?
No es posible.
That's not possible?
No es posible, ¿para qué? ¿Para hacerme daño a mí?
Why, to harm me?
Quién la mandó? Quién la, la...
Who sent her?
A mi propiedad.
To my property?
El señor Houston debería haber puesto un alto.
Mr. Houston should have stopped it?
Le había puesto un alto. Mayor, no sabía hasta después, hasta que tuve...
First of all, I didn't know about this until afterwards?
Y nos apoyó ella. Ella nos apoyó y nos dio el tiempo necesario cuando yo tuve la cita con Houston.
When I had a meeting with them first, they gave us the necessary time?
No tengo tiempo para ti, no tengo tiempo, ya se acabó.
And then after that, she would say, there's no more time. It's gone. Time's run out.
Nosotros vivimos aquí, nosotros somos la comunidad.
We live here. We're the community.
Él tiene que tener todo el tiempo posible y todo lo que...
She has to have all the available time possible?
Para, para servirnos a uno.
To serve us?
Para dirigir a uno.
Us.
A ver paso tomar, que se debe tomar. Entonces, si él no puede hacer su trabajo...
Therefore, if Mr. Houston cannot do his job?
Porque quiere proteger a la otra gente.
Why does he want to protect the other side?
Para que le haga daño a uno.
Instead of us?
Ustedes creen que es justo?
You think that's fair?
Yo no creo.
I don't think so.
Yo entiendo que a la mejor fue un error.
I think maybe it was a mistake?
Pero ya dos errores.
But two times?
Tres errores.
Three times?
No es cierto, no se puede, no se puede.
That's not possible?
Y este, y me di cuenta ahora que estuve con este problema que he estado viniendo aquí a Chicago.
And I found out now that I'm having this problem that I've been coming here?
Que sí te toma, se toman su tiempo y te...
That there are people that do take their time?
Y te, y te tratan como persona humana.
And they do treat us like human beings?
No como un pedazo de... No, como un pedazo de, ustedes ya saben de qué.
Not like a piece of, you know what?
Yo traté de hablar uno por uno con ustedes.
I tried to talk to each one of you?
Una persona me indicó, y yo traté de hacer eso.
And I did what someone tried to tell me?
Hasta este momento no he oído nada.
Up to now, I haven't heard anything back?
Yo sé, yo sé.
And I know?
El trailer puede estar ahí en la casa.
That my treasure can be in my property?
No hay ningún código.
There's no such code?
Trata de terminar en otros diez segundos si puede.
Okay, pero bueno, quisiera darle las gracias a las personas que sí me ayudaron.
I would like to thank the people that did help me?
Nomás permite me darle las gracias ahí.
That's all that I need to do?
A Yodi?
To Yodi?
Pila?
Pila?
Son las únicas personas que...
Anselmo Avalos?
Que me pusieron atención, y me dieron...
Those are the only people that paid attention to me?
Necesario, que se necesita.
And did what was necessary?
Como gente humana.
That I was treated like a human being?
Voy a seguir, voy a seguir viniendo para que hagan la...
I'm gonna continue coming.
Gracias, gracias por su tiempo, yeah. Next speaker, please.
All right, good evening. Armando Velazquez, Independence Avenue. Okay, first hat, Kiwanis hat. Just a few announcements there. We hope you enjoyed the Veterans Day ceremony, because we had two of our absolute outstanding youth deliver speeches there. If you haven't seen it, just go to @SouthgateKiwanis on Instagram, and you'll see those two speeches there. We have a Kiwanis cleanup this Saturday at the corner of Independence Avenue in Long Beach. Meet up at nine o'clock. We go for an hour and a half. After that cleanup, we're actually gonna be having a early brunch at one of the newest restaurants in South Gate, Abuelita's Cafe, I believe it is.
Abuelita?
And so you're all invited to participate in the service project, and then the brunch. We have a bingo lotería night a week from tomorrow at the Greenfield Care Center from five to seven. We play bingo with all of the patients who are recovering from severe accidents or severe illnesses. You're more than welcome to join us from five to seven. And our other K Kids Club at Monterrey Elementary is having a food and gift card drive. You can turn them in at Monterrey Elementary in Room 18, or you can also bring it at the next South Gate Kiwanis meeting scheduled for this Monday, November 18th, at seven o'clock. It is a Thanksgiving potluck there, so you're more than welcome to join us for that. All right, I'm taking off the Kiwanis hat, and I'm speaking as a South Gate resident here. Elections. First, I know that the elections have not been called yet, because there's always official ballots, but I'm calling it. Congratulations to our three incumbents here. I think it's pretty, I think it's over, right? And so, congratulations. I've had conversations with Mayor Ortado about me liking the dynamic of this current council. You don't necessarily always see eye to eye, but when you do, I think that's a good warm feeling, because, you know, coming from different sides, different angles, I think that's a good thing. However, I was a little bit disappointed in the election process. Two elections ago, the entire candidate slate of six candidates for three spots participated in an interview process by then-trusted platform that was very open to the public. There were also Q and A sessions at two different locations, at least that I know of. One was at the American Legion, the other one at South Gate High School. The last election process, there was a massive Q and A debate section out at South Gate Auditorium hosted by a nonpartisan organization. I have to say that this year I didn't see anything other than flyers of endorsements, and then independent bias social media pages, you know, putting up what they put up there. One of the things that I've always said about elections is that there has, you have to earn a vote, and you have to win an election. And I thought that this year, it was mainly about winning an election, and I'd like to see a change in that, and I hope that comes within the city of South Gate, whether it's a commissioner, I know that the, I know that our city can't, because you're an elected official, but I'm hoping that the city can take more initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. She only needs one minute, okay, so...
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Anna Lizarra is the Director for the South Gate Chamber of Commerce and the current President for the Rotary Club of South Gate. So take out your calendars, please. We have a lot of great events. We know the holidays are here already. But let's start with a turkey giveaway happening on Saturday at our office at the South Gate Chamber of Commerce, and this is exclusively for our seniors. So we know a lot of our, we always are concerned about our whole families, but sometimes our seniors also have that need. So we'll be doing a turkey giveaway for our seniors on the 16th of November, and this event begins at 10:00 a.m. at the South Gate Chamber of Commerce. Also, on November 19th, we have a grand opening. It's a digital grand opening in McDonald's on Firestone and Otis. This is at 12:00. You're all invited to join us, please. And we want to invite the community as well, so they can join us and learn about the new digital world that McDonald's is bringing to our city. Also, on December 8th, if you do not know yet, we have an amazing Christmas parade coming up, and this will be along Southern. We do have some street banners already set up. I've set up some on Southern as well, and these door hangers are being sent out to every home along that corridor on Southern, as well as the side streets. We're posting on social media platforms and just sharing it, doing email blasts and any other type of outreach we can do. If you guys can help us share this information as well, please, we ask for your support there. Then December 8th, it's a Sunday, and see you all at noon there. And something that is super exciting that has come back is our YFTE gift card. So remember, if you buy $25, $50, or $100, the city of South Gate will give you back $150 or $25. So you can redeem these at, we currently have 38 businesses that are registered. The Chamber of Commerce is going to collaborate with the city of South Gate to do another campaign and hopefully enroll new businesses like the Kiwanis just mentioned. The Abuelita Cafe is up. We want to encourage them to become participants. Or if you know of any business that you feel may qualify for this YFTE gift card, please let us know, and I'll do some outreach. Thank you.
Real quick, before you go on that, you need to update that list, because some of the people there don't do that anymore.
Correct, yes. Some businesses have been closed, so it's in the process of being updated.
You were gonna ask the question?
Yes, so in regards to the parade, I've been asked whether or not people are gonna be allowed to park or be on the north side of Southern, underneath the light.
The Dorothy side?
Yes. No, no. So...
On Southern?
On Southern, we have up and down the gosig light poles, power lines. So people want to know if they are gonna be allowed to park there or to be able to be on that side?
Well, the person to answer that would be the chief, not...
Chief, and I know Steve Costley, we've been working...
The answer is no.
Yes, okay. Are we going to put something out there to let the people know? Just because people have been asking once I've told them that we're having the parade on Southern?
We've been, it's illegal to park there. We've been notifying the people that have been parking there, and as we get closer, we'll put it out on our social media.
Okay, and then I'll share a flyer with you, and it does say here, parking restrictions and store, uh, street closures will be posted within the 72 hours that are usually allowed, but no, definitely no parking on Southern.
Are those going out to everyone in the community or just the affected area? That's why I'm asking, because the questions are not coming from the residents in that area, they're throughout the whole city. So I just want to make sure that those that are on YouTube that see this video later on understand that, no, you cannot park there, period, during the parade.
Regardless, I think it's a no parking zone.
Aside from that, yes.
Yeah, so we're working on a traffic plan so that days leading up to the parade, people are aware that there's no parking. We're just trying to figure out a mechanism to get that done, just so when people arrive, they don't park there, because once a parade starts, it's just hard to get cars moving.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Actually, just to clarify that, part of the traffic...
Let me close the audience portion real quick, and we'll get to that. Okay, I'm gonna close the audience portion at this time. Go ahead, Steve.
I was just gonna, part of the traffic plan for this is to make sure that the barricades that block each entry street into the Southern Avenue side will be far enough back that you cannot access the DWP right away. So you can't even get to those during the parade time.
Okay, emails.
Yes, Mayor, I do have a few. Before I begin, I just wanted to, reading the comments, I'd like to note, I'd like everyone to note that all emails I receive are read, for the record, at the council meetings or summarized. They're never read in its entirety, and I encourage anyone, everyone, to attend the council meetings so that you can share your full comments during your allotted three minutes. I have my first comment from Amy Lou from the library. She wanted to share some upcoming events. She's not able to join us here today. November 14th, there'll be a Fluent COVID Shot Clinic from 1:00 to 3:00. On November 26th, there'll be a Bear Hunt Book Party for children and caregivers at 3:00. December 7th is a pineapple bun baking demo with Phoebe Chow at 1:00 p.m. The December book clubs will discuss Happy Place for Emily Henry on December 10th at 6:30. La Guardiana de los Libros Que Vamos by Brianna La Busqueson on December 14th at 11:00 a.m. She also wishes everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. I have a second comment. This one states, "Good evening, council members. My name is Victor, and I live in South Gate. I am formally complaining about City Clerk Yody Glaze's actions during this election. She misinformed the public about candidate filing dates and did not correct the misinformation. She's been campaigning for certain candidates and has ignored violations of the city code regarding illegal campaign signs. She has also failed to disclose financial information about the Building Bridges PAC, which supported her and candidates she backs. I believe her actions are undermining the election process, and I urge the council to investigate." Thank you. And then I have, my last comment is, "Dear City Council, we're seeking your assistance in expediting the permit review process for our Domino's expansion. The process involves connecting an existing unit without changing the building's footprint or requiring the site work. We initially submitted documents in mid-August, and based on the expected timelines, we anticipated permit approval by January or February at the earliest. We would appreciate any efforts to expedite the planning and building review process. Thank you for your consideration. It's Joseph Banasco." And that was it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna go around the room, and if anything that was brought up pertains to any one of the department heads, please feel free to address them. Okay, Arturo, we'll start with you again.
Yes, I've got a CIP update for you tonight. If the city clerk can please put up the PowerPoint. So just wanted to report on the urban orchard project. We have made some more progress. We've just awarded a construction contract, and we're scheduled to start construction on November 25th. That'll be a five, that'll be completed by the end of April. On the left is the view of the project before construction was stopped, and on the right, it's where we're starting. We did some work in between, so we're looking forward to completing the project in April. Next slide, please. This is a couple of pictures of the Holodeck Community Park renovation project that is also well underway. We're looking to complete construction on December 19th, if the contractor is able to complete all of the work on the accelerated schedule. So that's what we're looking forward to. There's a lot of work to be done between now and then, but until I hear different, this is the date that I will be reporting. Next slide. Circle Park is also under construction. The work is well underway. Right now, you see the contractors working on some of the rough grading in the parking lot. That project is also on schedule for completion on March 31st. That is also the accelerated schedule, so the contractor is committed to attempting to meet that goal. Next slide. Then finally, I just wanted to put up this project one more time. This is the residential resurfacing projects. These are the streets that we're gonna be focusing on resurfacing next. We often get calls from residents with regards to what streets are going to be resurfaced, and if their street is, but I did want to communicate that this will be our focus for this fiscal year. There is one more street that we may be looking at over in front of Holodeck Community Park to help address the needs of the park, but at this point in time, this is the commitment for the project. So we're looking to complete design this month, and if all goes well with bids, we should plan on starting construction sometime in March of 2025. Thank you.
Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We've had a busy couple of weeks here at the park, as many of you were, and we thank you for being there for our Halloween event. It was one of our biggest we've had in a long time. If you were able to show up there and take a look, we literally filled the large quad with kids. We estimate eight to 10,000 kids showed up. It was a very busy night. We revamped a lot of it, and so it was a very good night, too. I think the kids enjoyed it. They all went home with plenty of candy to make every dentist in town happy, and it went over really well. We also had the, the week after that, the weekend after that, we had the Special Olympics in town, and we hold their fall games for them. They had about 700 athletes doing different events from golf to soccer to volleyball, just in softball. It was a great day out there, a very, very busy day out on the park. We also had a swim meet at the same time, so as always, South Gate Park's still hopping and having activities going, and that's it for now.
Thank you. Meredith?
Yes, good evening. And just responding to Mr. Picardo's comments earlier, I am working with them in regards to their trailer and their vehicle that's parked on their private property. So we're working through their concerns. And then lastly, in regards to the email, I am working with staff to help expedite that project. It is a tenant improvement, and we're hoping to release their permits, hopefully by early next month.
Okay, thank you. Here we go.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just an update, staff is still working on the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year '23, '24, ending, and we'll be reporting that back to council as soon as we receive that, which should be around the second council meeting in January.
Thank you, Wendy. Nellie?
Good evening. We have plenty of recruitments that keeps us very busy. Currently, we have open Journey Electrician, Lifeguard, Police Officer, and that's collateral, and Police Recruit, Public Works Senior Management Analyst in Engineering, and Recreation Leader to Grounds. And we're constantly opening positions and closing them and doing the whole process of interviewing. So if anyone's interested, keep an eye on the city website on their jobs, because we post them on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
I want to thank council members and the community for coming out to our event this past weekend, Family Day in the Park. It's, we always get a lot of good feedback from the community, and later on this evening, I'm gonna do a presentation on the community events and where we started, where we've gotten to this point, and the value that these events bring to our community. But thank you for being there. Appreciate it.
Rob?
Well, I'll just say that I was able to participate in the Halloween event, which was great, seeing all those kids. That was massive, impressive for my first time seeing that. That was massive, impressive for my first time seeing that. The veterans' event on Saturday was a great speaker and a great event, and then the Family Day in the Park afterwards, also on Saturday. So great to see all the community out. One item I forgot to mention on the long process to go through the negotiations that we spoke to at the special meeting was thanks to John Hamilton as a co-negotiator for the work he put in and his support staff for helping that process. It was a good teammate, and in the end, we had a good solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Salinas?
Nothing, I'm nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer?
No new comments. I'll just share some thoughts when the item for the technology master plan comes up.
Thank you. Rudy?
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Let me get my phone here. Well, first of all, let me just say, these last couple of weeks have been a tad bit challenging, I think, for all of us, but I would like to express my sincere gratitude to our Southgate community. Voting your conscience during this election, I think, is very evident. The votes are still being counted as we speak, so for now, we shall wait and see who the community voted in. But I did have the pleasure of attending Family Day at the Park this past weekend. It was a great success. It's really nice to be out with the community and reconnecting while on the campaign trail and seeing them there. I wasn't able to attend the trunk or treat, but I heard a lot of great feedback from the community saying how well organized it was and how every year they are looking forward to it. So I want to commend our police department for putting that together. And I also had the pleasure of honoring all of our service women and men in the military, and thank you for your service. I know we celebrated Veterans Day yesterday, but we should celebrate them every day because they are constantly putting their lives on the line so that all of us can enjoy the freedoms that we have here, not only in Southgate, but in the United States of America. Other than that, we shall wait and see what happens, but I look forward in continuing the good work that we do here on council, that all of us come with a different perspective, a different background, and I think our uniqueness is what keeps us whole. But when we work together collaboratively, we can move mountains. So I look forward to continuing to do that on this council. If the good Lord says yes, I will stay and keep my seat, but the numbers are looking good. So I am humbled by my community and the votes that they have invested in me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to start off with saying it was an honor to be there for the Veterans Day memorial ceremony. It was a great speaker. She, you know, she gave a great view into the perspective of what it takes to serve and how it's not just her serving, but it's also her family and having her children, her son there, was a great addition to it, to understand that there's a family behind every veteran, and I think that's something that we always have to remember as well, that it's not just the active or the retired veteran, but it's also the family that's serving as well. So great event to have that, and it's one that I look forward to every year. Also went to Family Day at the Park. I think one of the things that Chief said during his opening remarks kind of holds true. He said that a lot of the young participants in that program are future leaders. Funny thought, but you know, twenty-some years ago, I performed the National Anthem at Family Day in the Park when I was fifteen, sixteen years old, and I think your words speak true, right? I'm a current leader here in our community, and it all started from just singing the National Anthem at Family Day in the Park. So, so, but yeah, it's great to see the children out there. If you guys did not get an opportunity to hear the Mariachis play, they did such an amazing job. The director at the Southgate Middle School Mariachi, he's very energetic, very active with his group, and it was really fun to see that happen. We have some great talent out there. Thank you to all the nonprofits and the organizations that showed up. One of the ones that I think is very important that we highlight, and I know we had, there's a meeting going on today at the Tony's Restaurant regarding electrical vehicle rebates that are available through Southern California Edison. They were, they had a booth there at the Family Day at the Park, and it was just eye-opening to see the type of opportunity that our residents have. There's an eight thousand dollar rebate opportunity to our residents. You just have to apply and qualify for it, and you can, you know, use that towards the purchase of a new or pre-owned electric vehicle. So if you are interested in it, please see, you know, our social media posts out there. We have a lot of information on how to get to those, to those next meetings that are coming up, which I believe is next week. There's an additional meeting next week, and it's open to the public, so really get out there and get informed. Steve, is there any, I know we have some time before the event, but I know these tickets are usually sometimes very hard to get. Breakfast with Santa on December fourteenth. How is that going?
Breakfast with Santa was sold out today at four o'clock.
Okay, so let's forget about, I even brought it up. And we'll say that I look forward to have, being there at the event. It's always, you know, well put together by your staff, and I think that that's one of the things that we look forward to in the, in every year's calendar. And then I do want to just bring up, we're doing our, you know, as a board member of the Southgate Junior Athletic Association, they gave me the opportunity every year to do a softball clinic for a toy drive. This year, we're going to change it up a little bit, and we're actually doing a minors division softball tournament toy drive, and the toys are going to be donated to our Santa Cop program, like we do every year. We like to try to, we'll get a police cruiser out there, and we try to stuff the car with as many toys as we can. I think last year, we stuffed the car in a half. I think it was the second car that ended up having to be called to be taken out with the rest of the toys. But every player that's participating is donating a toy. We have over eighty players participating, so that's a minimum of eighty toys is going to be presented that we'll be able to donate to the Santa Cop program, as well as we have some great donors in the community that just will show up. So I'll offer that invite to any of our residents this Saturday. We'll be there at the Southgate J A office right by the snack bar. We'll be collecting the toys there. The tournament will take place from nine A M. and should finish around three thirty with the winning team getting championship rings. The kids are looking forward to it, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and of course, we're like, we're always thankful for the police department to be able to partner with us and, and provide that cruiser out there so we can, the kids have a blast just knowing that we're filling it up. It's for Saturday. Yes. I'll, I'll text Manny as well because I, and I'll let him know. All right, appreciate it. That's all I get. Thank you.
Mr. Rios, Councilmember Rios?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, folks that are here with us this evening, spending time with us. Let's see, where do I start? Why, I want to start by congratulating my colleagues, even though, because I think you, it's not official, but I know you, it's, I don't know, I think that there's that many hidden votes out there, so we'll see. You never know, right? But, but congratulations. Guys, I know campaigning is not an easy thing when you're knocking at doors and...
He, he called it, though. Doesn't that count?
Yeah, I think his words, yeah, it counts, so, so, no, really, seriously, I think it's always real stressful. At least, I, I, that's made my experience, so I want to congratulate you, all of you three that are, who'll be on the council again, and those that tried, right? Because they deserve some credit, too, right? I mean, because it's not easy, put your hat out there, decide to run and expose yourself to the community. So I want to thank everybody who participated in, in elections. And, and then in regards to elections, I just want to say that hopefully that, it's been a lot of stress the last four or five months of just hearing all these campaigns and, you know, I know that even family squabbles because some were right, some were left, and I know I had some of those discussions that colleagues here and there, and so hopefully now that the election is behind us, that we could come together and, and just, you know, try to move forward, right? That's the main thing, right? Look at the bright side of things, and, and, you know, we, we know we had President Trump now elect before, so, you know, so we know what it's like, at least. We'll see. All right? And I just want to say something on that. You know, I also attended the Family Day in the Park. It's always a great, I took my grandkids and they had a great time and with the Mariachis, and I know I saw your grandkids there, too, and it's always good to see the children and, and the nonprofits, all the parents that are involved, everybody, the community. You had little kids, you had seniors, you had everybody. It's a mix of people coming together, city officials and everybody else. So it's really, it's a, it's a day I don't want to miss. And of course, let's not forget our veterans who put their life on the line, and, and we celebrated this weekend, and, you know, let's hope that we, we pray for them, that they continue to be safe, because there are men that are, men and women who are serving in the armed services currently in different places in our country, in the world. So I wanted to say that. And one more thing, I mean, because, you know, we had elections and we have a new president. I know there's some concern about immigration because that is a big issue at the national level, and I just wanted to raise this with the chief a little bit, just to, because I know we have a lot of folks that are, you know, immigrants to this community and are part of our community, and I wanted to kind of get an idea what, how our, because trust is so important with our law enforcement, and, and I think that I wanted to get here a little bit about how we're going to handle that. You know, we don't know exactly what the Trump administration, we know that he's already making appointments and all of this, but we know it's going to be a little bit more tough, at least that's what it sounds like, but I wanted to get your take on how we're going to, you know, what, what our, our law enforcement role and policy will be.
Sure. So I know that the new L A P D chief, Jim McDonald, just addressed it for the city of L A, but the sentiment holds the same here. We, we build a trust within our community. We've never enforced immigration laws. That's not our jurisdiction. We're a local municipality that's responsible for local crimes. I will say that there is occasions where someone commits a violent crime, and those are the people, whether you're an immigrant or you're not, you're here illegally or not, we're going to have to deal with them in the criminal justice system. So whatever happens after that, that's on them. We don't ask for status when we, when somebody commits a crime, we're going to deal with those people, but our, our role in, in this community is not to go out there. We've never asked immigration status. It's just, that's not something that we've done. So that practice will hold the same. Our responsibility is keeping the streets safe. I don't care what your status is. We owe it to the community to make sure that our businesses are taken care of and our residents are taken care of.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. And just two last things, just want to say that we did get a new school board member. Looks like that's going to be the case, so we'll, you know, we'll have to start that relationship with, with that new school board member. And I thought that the other thing that I just want to highlight is that the counties at Measure G bypassed, slim margin, that's what I'm hearing today, so that's the one to expand the county board of supervisors to, from five to nine, so that's an, and create an executive, like a mayor for the county. So we'll see how that, in the coming years, how that evolves. I just wanted to share that. And then I want to share something from the college point of view. If you haven't read, it's in the Wave, our president from East L A College, I don't know if many of you know I work with the college, he was appointed to, the chancellor left, the chancellor for the L A Community College, he retired this month, and so they appointed the president of East L A College, my boss, to become the chancellor for a year, interim chancellor. He's already started this week, and we have an interim president for, somebody that, Monti, Dr. Monti Perez, and hopefully some of you will meet him eventually. He started this week today, and we met with him today. He's a former president of Mission College, has a lot of years in leadership roles. He did retire and then he came back, so he's going to be serving for a year during that time, and, and so I just wanted to let people know that that's kind of what, what happened. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, just piggybacking on what Councilman Barron was mentioning regarding the Empower Gateway rebate. The other two dates that are coming up, it's, one, it's in Hub Cities, which is right down on Tweedy Boulevard, it's November sixteen, and the next one, it's November nineteen, it's a Littland Weaver Library. And I, I think that this program right now, it's really good for whoever has electric cars, and if you know of anyone that want to participate, I mean, eight thousand dollars, it's, it's not bad, and it all has to do with your income, income level, so go to these meetings if you do have an electric car. Maybe city manager, we can also make sure that our city employees, I mean, if they do have electric cars, they can participate, and whoever's interested in, in seeing if they can qualify for a rebate, I think it's, it will be good, because I know that we have several of our employees that, that have electric cars. Maybe they might want to participate. And also, again, most of you already mentioned it, the different events that we attended, trunk or treat, great event, and also the Halloween at the park. It was amazing. I just wanted to say, Steve, that you guys did such an amazing job putting together the way that it was set. I mean, just to see that amount of people on that quad, it was just, it, it was really good. And, and the food trucks, because it wasn't just the tamales that it was selling out there, but the food trucks and the different games for the kids, and also that, what was it, that they were doing in the middle? My gosh. Yeah, the cookie decorating, so I think that was really great. More events, and talking to Tina, she did mention that next year is going to be something different, but even better than what they had this year, so I'm looking forward to, forward to that. Also, Family Day at the Park, again, twenty-eight years. They come and go, and I can say, I didn't know that Josh sang the National Anthem on the twen, the first year, so maybe next council meeting, you might want to sing the National Anthem. I will be good to hear you sing. And also, I just wanted to say and thank you to our detectives, Sarah Medrano and Tony Mendez. They did a presentation on fentanyl to the parents at Southgate Middle School, so I just want to thank them for that. And one of the things that the parents were asking, if they could have, you know, if they can have their children also, you know, get the, at the same workshop, because I think it's important for kids to learn about fentanyl. And I think the principal was going to talk to the police department, the L U S D P D, so hopefully they can do that. But just talking to the parents, I think, it would, to them, it's, it's important for an officer from the city to give them that workshop. So right now, I'm talking to the principal to see how we can manage that and to see if we can get the, the school district to okay, for our police department to give that presentation to the kids. And I know that we're going to be talking about something that has to do with the L U S D, not, not L U S D, but the resource officer that is not going to be able to serve our own schools, so, and that's on consent counter, so I wanted, do want to talk about that. And again, you know, election is over, and I can tell you that, yes, it's very stressful. I mean, it's a whole three months of a lot of stress, but I just want to, you know, I just want to thank all the, the residents who came out and vote. I think it's important to, you know, to get the word out, and just coming out and looking at the amount of votes that are being counted, our residents vote. So I think that's, that's important, and we'll wait for the results, you know, we'll wait for the results, because I still say, you know, until the last vote is counted and they make it official, that's when it's official. But, you know, good luck to all of you, to all of us, because I think it's important for everyone to, you know, when we come to this council, I think the dais here, we need to respect this dais, and I think that we have shown that. The respect that we all deserve and the respect that we should give our community, we have to respect it on this dais. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter whether the outcome that, that comes out, it's, whether it's, it's not comfortable with, the residents not comfortable with us, we still have to respect the vote of the majority, and that's what the, that's what our community decides who to vote for, and the community is the one that makes the decision, so that's the reasons why we are up here. And we have our staff to do the work, because they are the ones who actually do the work. We're just here to make decisions, and you all are the ones who are doing the work. So looking forward to continue working with my colleagues and move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I attended a...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but before you start, I think you wanted to open up the, your part of the conversation by congratulating the Los Angeles Dodgers on their eighth World Series... Series victory.
Back to order. I've not used that until now, by the way. Oh, my God. No, stop. I got business to take care of. I attended this meeting this morning with a group of elected officials from the southeast area. It included Linwood, Huntington Park, Maywood. And the discussion was dealing with the broadband. Our city, we took a position, I think it was in May, somebody will have to correct me if I'm wrong. I've been known to be wrong from time to time, but I think it was in May that we took a position of calling out the poor service and higher cost to these services, to people in low-income, socially economically disadvantaged communities versus more affluent communities. And again, the conversation continues, right? That is still going on. And so, Mr. City Manager, if we can look into where we are with that, we can reach out to the managers, city managers from the surrounding areas and see what we can do. Because when you think of, especially like when we had the situation of COVID, students had to rely on internet, affordable internet, reliable internet, in order to do their schoolwork. And some of our students did not have access to that, and that was very unfortunate. But yet, in more affluent areas, they have access and it's more affordable. Why is it more expensive for people in areas like ours? And those are part of the discussion. So again, if we can look into that and bring a report to us, see where we're going with that. And by the way, I met a gentleman there. I'll give you his name shortly, because, let me see, I think I wrote it down. Dan Carroselli, he's from the Bureau of Street Lighting from the city of Los Angeles. I'll spell his name out for you later on. But maybe that's good information for us, especially with the Southern California innocent issues that our community's been having. Okay.
Yeah. You know, when you mentioned broadband, they put it back into the governor's budget. I mean, they took our cities out and some of the southeast cities. And we went to Sacramento, and I heard Hector de la Torre and others, we went. And so it's put back, that's the long term. At least there's money, we're on the plan. They had taken us out, this city and other neighboring cities. So at least that's good. But I know it's going to take time to evolve, but at least, just for the record, just wanted to mention that.
Okay. But again, I want to be careful, because it's not on the agenda. So no, I just want to mention. I get it. Okay. Information.
No, but I think you could have gotten the Dodgers on broadband.
Yeah. You know, I know we had a meeting in closed session on evaluation of our city manager. Can we have a meeting evaluation on our city attorney? I think it's about time we start having that conversation. You know, I'm not laughing at that stuff, right? Okay, Halloween events, I think that's already been discussed. But I think that the thing to do is to really praise our staff, our South Gate Police Department and our South Gate Parks and Recreation Department for not only putting these things together, but making it safe for everybody to do that. And also our public works. I know that we had a very challenging time with the lack of streetlights, because the Southern California isn't lights. But we tasked you with putting at least the temporary, or at least something that will get the lights up, and you were able to do that a day or two before. Is that right? Is that...
Yes, we had a solar, a hybrid solar streetlight project that we were able to complete before the day of Halloween. So we had some lighting up. And I do want to extend that credit to the Electrical Division, worked very hard to procure and get staff out there to do all of the installations, as well as thank the city manager for his guidance through that project.
Okay. Now, in regards to Mr. Rubin's conversation, you know, I make every effort to meet with everybody who reaches out. And it's not always easy, because the schedules are always difficult to meet. Sometimes it's my schedule, sometimes it's the resident or the business. But when I do go out and meet with them and I bring the information to staff, I hope that, you know, the impression that I heard today was that he felt that we weren't doing enough. So I know that I've discussed this one with you. So again, maybe tomorrow I'll sit with you, so I can get an update, because those are serious issues. And look, we're not always going to make our residents happy, but I want to make sure that at least they know that we're doing our very best for them. And, you know, he has some concerns that he feels are very legitimate, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to give them the respect that they need. Let's see. Finally, so again, the elections, look, I guess we all have a different interpretation of what elections are about. If there's an election and there's, you know, 10 people competing for a seat, none of them should look at one another as like an opponent. You're vying for a seat, and if people want to elect you, then they'll do that. If they don't, you know, we're talking about stress. Maybe it's because I'm the oldest one here. Well, aside from my friend to my left here, I was really, you know, my wife said, look, if it doesn't work out, we've got more time to spend, you've got more time to help me wash dishes and stuff, which I would have been content to do. I'm retired from my other job as a supervisor from the post office. Let me tell you, I'm glad I did that. I retired from the JA, a volunteer program. And let me tell you, there is always a lot of stress involved when you're the president of an organization that's supposed to be providing services and knowing the challenges that you meet there. As much as I love that organization, the very next day after I stepped away, the weight that was lifted off my back, because it is a lot of pressure, because you have board members who don't always agree, and somehow you try to get everybody on the same page. And they're amazing people, and I think Josh will tell you that, because he's there now. And, but I love all of them. But again, with all due respect to everybody, just not having to be there or have to worry about it is, is a little bit of, it gives me a little bit more time. I still think about it, and I hope that people can move forward with that program. But again, the point is that we offer ourselves, we offer our experience, we offer our knowledge, we offer our commitment to the community, and at the end, it's the voters who decide. I know there were a lot of bad things that were being said about all three of us by, you know, one particular page, and it looked like, you know, that didn't seem to work. All three of us got, it looked like we're on our way to getting sworn in again in next month. But, you know, I'm going to tell you right here, right now, if the numbers stay the way they are, my commitment to working with my colleagues here is going to be the same as always, try to be professional here. We might have a different point of view, but we respect. We live in democracy. And, you know, the people in the community may not be happy, maybe they wanted this candidate over another, but you respect the outcome. Look, I look at the outcome at the national level. I can tell you, I'm not thrilled with it, but, you know, it's out of my hands. And all I can do is control me. I don't control you, I don't control you, I don't control anybody here. The only one I control is me. And I'm committed to making myself happy by not worrying about those things that I can't control. So again, if at the end of the day, all three of us are back on, and that's a sore spot for some people out there, we'll do our best to still make you happy as well. Our job is to provide the services here to the city of South Gate, to work with our staff. And I can tell you, in working with them for the last few years, has been amazing. And again, I'm, you know, very proud of Maria Dabila, these comments that are being made, and you're entitled to your opinion too. But at the end of the day, that's very insulting, though. I mean, you know, you don't have to like me either, and I don't have to like you back, but I have to serve you anyway, and I'm committed to doing that anyway. That being said, whatever the outcome is at the end, you know, I want to thank everybody who was out there. And let me tell you, I've seen some of the campaigns out there in other cities. Ours was actually very tame in comparison to some of that. I saw some very nasty hit pieces, particularly in the school board position on Channel 34, Channel 52, there were some ads that were put out there attacking a particular candidate. And that, that's just, you know, I don't, I don't get that. You're really hurting. Yeah, my concern is this, we're southeast L.A. And whenever somebody from southeast L.A. is being accused of something, you know, if it were true, fine, but when it's not, you're just making all southeast L.A. look bad. And I just hope that people just can refrain from that kind of stuff. And I respect everybody's point of view, but when you're trying to attack an individual, you're attacking more than that. You're attacking the institution of the process itself, and you're attacking all, and let's face it, we're all Latino people, serving our communities, and we all get judged by the actions of other Latinos. And again, let's just move forward. Okay, that being said, I would like to push item number 11 up. I think it would be more appropriate. So let's do item number 11, and then we'll come back to consent calendar. So can you read that into the record, please?
City Council will consider receiving and filing the Technology Master Plan Council Update Presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The initial TMP was accepted in January of 2020, which consisted of a six-year plan and 82 initiatives. Tonight, Tom Jacobson, a partner with Client First, 40 years of experience in IT infrastructure and also IT operations, is going to present to Council the Technology Master Plan Updates.
Looks like you all get a copy of the budget.
Okay. My name is Tom Jacobson. I'm a partner with Client First Technology Consulting out of Corona, California. Ready to go? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Good? All right. Cool.
Oh, I just need my glasses. I can't see these little tiny...
Me too.
I don't know who printed these out, but the writing is really small.
Yeah, me too. All right. This particular slide is California Agency Served, we're a national consulting firm, been in business since 2004. I've been a partner with Client First since 2007, and have worked with the city since the start of this plan. Next slide, please. Introductions, I've told you a little bit about myself, the objective of the plan. We're going to talk about all the various steps, and then the project budget that you have before you. Who are we are? Real quick, we're headquartered in Corona. We have offices around the country. We have staff in nine states at this point. There are about 40 consultants in the firm overall. We work solely, well, we actually have one not-for-profit client, which is actually a theater company in Chicago, is one of my favorites. And everything else is local government, school districts, special districts, counties. We work with mid-sized communities about 75% of the time, just like you. We've done this particular project more than 150 times. We've got 10 of these projects in process at this very moment. Two of them are repeats for people that we did the plan for seven years ago. Normally, it takes people six or seven years to get through one of these plans. Next slide. Oops, we did this already? You can zip on ahead. Council accepted the plan originally in January of 2020. It was a six-year plan and 82 initiatives, as Wendy said. Here's a summary of the plans. Priorities were determined by staff at that time. As we do these plans, we involve members of all the departments. So the departments actually select the priorities. We kind of work through those with them. You can see the department application systems were seven high priorities. IT infrastructure, operations, and cybersecurity accounted for 25 high priority projects. I think in general, you know, more than half of the initiatives within the plan are high priorities, actually about 2/3. Next slide, please. Ooh, keep, let's, ooh, yeah, this got fancy. Okay. So we want to start at the bottom here. This is where we had to start, you know, kind of below what you can see underwater, I guess, at this point. We had to start with infrastructure improvements and security, cybersecurity improvements, to keep the city safe, and the city's data safe and secure. Then we had to reorder priorities shortly after the plan was accepted, and had to work on really helping staff to work from home and providing adequate internet access and moving to Office 365, which is an online cloud-based service, which allowed staff to work from anywhere, which is really important. Once we got those things done, we moved on to replacing the phone system. We really, we spent six months through the procurement process and nursing the old phone system along. We actually bought a used spare phone server, so that we could make it through that time. We implemented IT help desk software to keep, you know, tickets rolling through, a public safety radio system, and worked on networking. Now finally, we really get to things that help the departments. Most of the things below you would consider to be plumbing or the utility. And we're working now on ERP replacement and some HR improvements. Demonstrations actually for a new ERP system are scheduled to start next week. The system needs to be replaced by 2029. So we've got a two-year implementation timeline after we decide, which will happen, you know, early next year. That will come to use as a separate item. Other items that are more resident-facing, website replacement project was completed, some permitting improvements were done, the Tweedy Mile Wireless. We're going to probably kick off a project to improve permitting some more here in the next few months, and really zero in on that particular area, and it will help both residents and the businesses of the community.
In case you saw me smiling a little bit earlier when you were talking about cybersecurity, I was hacked this morning.
Uh-oh.
And everybody got an email from me. In fact, I got an email from me asking me to buy something. So I knew it was a hack, because I know I didn't send it to me.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry for that.
Well, that's why when you started talking about it, and I kind of smiled or laughed, I didn't want to feel disrespected.
You're right. No, understood. It's really, we'll talk more about that as we go through. You know, we've been working on cybersecurity improvements throughout, and let's just roll to the next slide. I'll get ahead of myself otherwise. We talked about backup upgrades were important. We implemented redundant internet connectivity. The city, AT&amp;T actually has conduit across a bridge that every now and then, in winter, homeless people would start fires underneath that bridge to perform. The city had two outages, one of 36 hours and one of 72 hours, before we implemented this system. So major improvement, major improvement in efficiency, two different paths, two different vendors. I talked about the phone system. One of the things we added for cybersecurity is security awareness training to try to help staff to prevent, you know, email hacks and other types of things. to try to help staff to prevent, you know, email hacks and, and other types of things. Also, we did some more cybersecurity, additional cybersecurity work and then the help desk implementation. More than half of the initiatives in the plan are either completed or are underway at this point. Next slide. I talked about the ERP implementation. We're working to complete a core network overhaul. The core network equipment, the things that connect all the computers together and make all these things, all this possible, was originally installed in two thousand and twelve. Typical life for equipment like that is seven years. So, um, you've got your money's worth out of the equipment. We're replacing it now and finish City Hall and expect to finish the police department core network in November, December. The next major thing we're working on right now, Seattle servers and storage, also from two thousand and twelve. The equipment is here except for kind of key component, the things, the power supplies, the stuff that plugs into the wall. We're waiting on the undelivery of those and then once that's done, we're going to start working diligently on that. The next thing to do is replace all the switches in all the remaining facilities, which will get done in early twenty twenty-five. In twenty, in late twenty twenty-three, the FBI came out with Criminal Justice Information System Policy Expansion that dramatically increased the cybersecurity requirements of the city police department. Cybersecurity improvements sixty-two, sixty-two and seventy-three relate to satisfying those, those requirements from the FBI. And then a cybersecurity assessment would, will outline the rest of the improvements that are required through this program to get police up to par so that next time they have a FBI audit, they'll be able to pass with flying colors. Next, next slide. You know, uh, I think the original, we're in year four of a six-year plan. We're a little less than half done. We've got a lot in progress. It's been slow going. You know, staff have been really, really busy just keeping the lights running, lights on. And, uh, that's their day-to-day responsibilities. I mean, you don't necessarily always have a lot of time to work on, um, new projects. And then, um, you know, when the equipment gets that old, sometimes you have to tape it up to keep it running and then, uh, and then go back to actually replacing it. So there's been some patching and fixes along the way. This year, um, we added Contract System Administration Assistance to free staff from project work. And that's actually made a, a, a great deal of improvement. And we've been able to get more things done. We've been able to actually, uh, complete a few other projects that have just been actually partially done for some number of years. And I think we're, we're making better inroads into, um, the plan at a faster pace at this point. Next slide. Plan projects, this is the next steps. Uh, the, these, I talked about the Criminal Justice Information System, Disaster Recovery Planning, and IT policies and procedures are both a part of the Criminal Justice Information System Update. So doing those is, is key to, um, keeping the police department secure. We really want to do a technology training room as a prerequisite to ERP. A new, uh, a new financial system will be a complete change from the system that the city currently uses. That system's really about thirty years old is when it was designed. So, um, thirty years old was like at the dawn of little computers. So, uh, it looks like a mainframe system. It's going to be a major, major change for staff. Having a place to train staff and keep, uh, and, and make them comfortable with the system would be really important. Um, once we get the decision made on a, on a finalist for the ERP system, we expect about a two-year implementation cycle with that, starting with, um, core, usually core general ledger payroll. And then IT operations improvements, just to, one of the things you want to do is, you know, we talked about, uh, staff, you know, having a lack of time. One of the things you want to do is, is try to make the IT staff more efficient too. So you don't, you know, you don't come back and ask for another three or four people. So we try to, we try to implement tools to make, um, IT team more efficient along the way. Inventory, automated inventory tools, automated cybersecurity tools, those kinds of things. Future applications, I talked about land management, which is planning and permitting. Hope to start that soon. And the enterprise asset management system for public works and a capital improvement planning system too. Our future things in construction management. There's been also, um, some initial discussions about document management, which will help with records retention and, um, kind of clarifying what are documents of record and what's, what are actually working documents and keeping those straight and secure and secure for the city clerk. And then, uh, police are also working on a twenty-plus-year-old computer-aided dispatch and records management system. And, uh, there's not that many clients on that particular system anymore. So at some point, that, that system's going to have to be replaced and that's a, a pretty big price tag. That summarizes the plan as I, I think. Next slide, oh, there's more, huh. Alright, I think I already talked about all this. And then, uh, yeah, yeah, the only additional point here is that we expect the system will be cloud-based. Current system actually sits physically here in the computer room. So, um, that'll be a, another big change for staff. Makes it actually, I think, easier to manage and will reduce the server count, which will be nice. Questions, answer questions?
Okay, well, before we do that, let me open it up to the audience. If anybody in the audience has any questions, comments or concerns, please step forward.
Okay, there's three things I want to see added onto this technology master plan. One is a, uh, the cameras, the cameras that we use for our city council room. Eventually, they're going to go faulty, they're going to go haywire. And I don't want to argue with our fascist asshole city manager and say, hey, are you going to upgrade the cameras? And he starts giving me a hassle, well, they're not part of the technology master plan, they're not a priority. No, fuck that. I want the cameras added onto the technology master plan. That's point number one. Point number two, a phone-based call-in feature. I want that added onto our technology master plan. Now, our, uh, you know, fucked up mayor, Gil Hurtado, came up with the bright idea of phasing out our beloved Zoom system. Now, had he known, now had I known that he was going to swindle us and, uh, take away our Zoom system, uh, in, while we were pursuing the cameras, I would have never done it. I would have never gone after the cameras had I known that our mayor was going to pull this, uh, the, the swindle on us of taking away the Zoom system. So for that reason alone, we should have the phone-based call-in feature. Now, what do I mean by a phone-based call-in feature? How do you use Zoom? Zoom is an app. You download the app onto your tablet or laptop. You're using the internet to access the meeting. With a phone-based call-in feature, you're using your touchscreen pad on your phone, dialing in the numbers to call into the meeting. You're using cellular towers, you're using cellular networks, you're using satellites to call in. It's a completely different setup. Look, our own, uh, I, uh, you know, tech guru, our city treasurer, he, you know, this is, this is his area of expertise. This is background, this is what he does for a living, for crying out loud. So, i- i- and even he told me that it's less costly with a phone-based call-in feature than having to pay for Zoom services. So that's point number two, phone-based call-in, uh, feature for, uh, meetings. And point number three, I want the city treasurer to be hands-on. I want him to be all over this technology master plan because I want someone representing the interests of the residents and for him to advocate for projects and services that he thinks would be a benefit to us, the residents. See, there's no one in this fucking building that is advocating and looking out for the interests of the residents. I want the city treasurer to be part of this, uh, team that's formulating the, the technology master plan. And, you know, Mayor, what the fuck happened? You know, you used to be a man of the people, you used to look out for the interests of the residents. And it seems to me that your priority and your concern is just about the people inside this building and meeting their needs. Well, what about the needs of the people? What about the interests of the people? And exactly who is this technology master plan supposed to benefit? Is it supposed to benefit us, the residents, or just the staff that works inside this building? So, uh, yeah, yeah, those are the things I'm pushing for. Phone-based call-in feature to be added on the technology master plan. Let the cameras that we use for our meetings be included because I don't want to have to argue with the city manager for them to be upgraded and then for the city treasurer to be a part of the formation of our IT master plan. That's it.
Thank you for those kind words. Any other speaker? Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. Any emails on this subject?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. Says, uh, dear city council, I would like to request that the city council consider implementing a hybrid model for in-person and virtual participation in council and other meetings. Many important comments are missed, are missed, uh, from individuals who cannot attend in person. As a first-time mother, it has been difficult for me to always secure childcare for my fifteen-month-old and attending meetings in person with her can be challenging. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Lizette Ruiz. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. Okay, any comments, questions, concerns, motion? Yes?
I'm going through your plan here. Item number ten, where it says user training and support. I see that's still in progress. Where are we at right now with that? And how many employees are being trained, um, to utilize this software?
The, the, um, at this point, the only active training program we have is the security awareness training, which is an annual training for all employees. New employees are trained as a part of the onboarding process. Additional training is planned for Office three sixty-five. It's a, there's a lot there. It's not just email, it's how you collaborate, how, how actually your files are transferred to and from the cloud. And it's very complicated. So, um, just teaching people the right way to use that is, is, uh, is planned for this year. It's, training is an ongoing thing every year.
And if I can just add to that, um, also in the Nioga program that is run out of HR, there is a training feature module that employees could sign up to learn Excel, Microsoft Outlook, so different applications as well.
Okay, thank you. Item number sixteen, Eden. Wherein it indicates this is for an on-premises solutions to be run on-site on city-owned servers. How many do we have? And what is the condition of those servers?
There are grand total in the twenties for physical servers here at the city. They were purchased in, um, in two thousand, most of them were purchased in two thousand and twelve. Some of the ones in police were updated in the first year of the plan, twenty twenty, in, actually, twenty twenty-one because they were, you know, we really do want to keep the police working every day. The equipment to replace those is mostly in the building, um, like I said, except for the power supplies.
Okay, thank you, those were the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you for the report. I guess, uh, we're in year twenty twenty-four and we've spent, uh, about eleven million already, it looks like. Uh, and we got a, another three, three million or so. So, uh, is this, does this go on? Because I thought I seen twenty-six, is this, is this ongoing? I mean, is this, uh?
So this is the plan. I think this version is the original plan document and doesn't really match what we've spent. That's a separate, that's a separate, uh, number. So I did not bring that number with me tonight, but I can certainly gather up that information and provide it to, to staff to provide to you.
Okay, but then the question around, it's ongoing, right? Is this on?
Yeah, you, you know, there's two, there's several things there. In the plan is, uh, Initiative Thirty-nine is computer equipment replacement planning, which is, uh, the initiative actually outlines for every piece of technology within the, the city, when that should be replaced based on best practices. For instance, council cameras should be replaced about every seven years. Network equipment, servers should be replaced at every seven years. Laptops typically are four years or five years. So that's all outlined in the, in the plan and it's, that's an ongoing expense. On the software side, um, some things happen that are beyond all of our control. Software companies are bought all the time and their product, and as those companies are bought, actually, you know, they sunset a product and actually make it go away. So you have to move to another product. That's part of what's happening with your financials with Eden is that actually is product is sunsetted for twenty twenty-nine. And these things are all beyond, beyond your control. So you have to switch software sometimes just based on vendors saying, we're not going to support you anymore. We talked about training being ongoing, there are several, and there's just always more to do.
And, and finally, just, uh, you talked about infrastructure and security and cyber security. You know, are, are we up to speed on that? Because I, Mayor just mentioned that he was hacked today and I know we have had our phones and other system, uh, you know, are, are, I mean, in that regard, I mean, uh?
Yeah, we, we've implemented, um, all the, all the basic necessary things. The items we're going to work on this coming year are making sure that we can rapidly recover our data, that we have a good incident response plan should we have a larger issue within the, within the city for, um, that, for, you know, hacking. And then also, um, something that'll monitor the network even while we're sleeping. So, uh, a system to monitor the network and notice anomalies. And then they, and it does that twenty-four by seven and then there's a, uh, network operations center that'll always catch those alerts, respond to them and deal with them. So that's in the plan for this, this coming year too. Okay?
Any other questions?
Yes, I have one more. So I believe it's page seven, where it says video surveillance and door access fifty-nine and sixty. Single video surveillance management system for use throughout the city. Consider integration with door access control. Says not started. Is that something that we're going to be starting or is that on hold?
Um, there have been some efforts along that, that regard, but, um, nothing that's really come to fruition. It's not in the plan for this year. I think, uh, it's a, it's very expensive. You know, the video, we, um, we actually just, uh, did a project for another city of, you know, your size and to do all their buildings was around two million dollars.
Okay, because I'm looking at the numbers, it says two hundred to three hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Are those numbers incorrect?
That was then, this is now.
But when was this report made?
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen.
In twenty nineteen?
Yeah, yeah. It's part, it's partly, costs have gone up about fifty percent for that equipment and partly just, every time we talk to an agency about this, their needs expand. They want more cameras and more coverage. And people now think of this as a force multiplier for police. Whereas before it was, you know, we want to make sure that if somebody, somebody puts graffiti on City Hall walls, we catch them. But now it's, now it's really thought of as a proactive policing tool.
So I would like to request an updated, um, accurate reporting since this was created back in two thousand and nineteen, eighteen, twenty. So I'm looking at it, so it's not really not giving me a real picture of what we have today, what was done, what hasn't been done. So if I could get that from staff, I'd appreciate it because then it's looking more of a actual document of what we've done in comparison to something that we developed.
I maintain a, I maintain a more, a more current version. It, I, it's for my own use, so I'll need to clean it up a bit, but, um, we can get that to staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer, you had a question?
Sure, you know, I have a couple of items I wanted to just expand on. So the network backup, you mentioned, we had, you know, the two diverse paths. Did we consider Starlink or some type of satellite? And the reason I'm thinking that, the event of an earthquake, likely, you know, all services, land services will break and we need to go air. Is there any thoughts around Starlink to give us an alternative path?
Yeah. Yeah, a third pass? Yes.
A third, or, you know, an option for disaster recovery?
We haven't implemented it yet. I have several clients that have Starlink implemented, and none of them, well, I hate to say this in public, but none of them are totally satisfied with it. Comcast is gonna, is going to deploy a Star, manage Starlink service here, probably in the first quarter of the coming year. And I have several clients that are interested in that, and primarily because Starlink as a service, you know, I have a couple clients that have tried to use it when they need it, and it just hasn't kicked in automatically. So we, we're really looking forward to a managed service that is watched, you know, 24 by 7, and we know it's going to be available.
And there's service providers out there already providing an MSP wraparound Starlink as well. So, you know, I would encourage you to take a look at who those carriers are, so not wait for others. But, you know, the satisfaction on the service, it shouldn't be used for primary, it should be used for backup in the event of an emergency.
Sure.
And now wireless coverage, I saw that in the report, there was a completion of the Tweety Boulevard Wireless Project. Is that correct? That included the parks? Is that, or is just Tweety Boulevard?
Just Tweety Boulevard.
Okay. Was there thoughts on expanding coverage, you know, onto the park, because there's a lot of dark spots there? Even the senior center, I think, had some challenges. So I guess that'll be for staff later on, since it's not part of the master plan. The next one, backup services. How confident are we in the event of a ransom malware impacting the environment and then encrypting the backups? How confident are we that we'll be able to de-encrypt or restore from the drives that we have?
So we use a service that has, we use the same service for police and for city hall, are two separate, that have local servers and cloud-based backups. Those, they also contain immutable copies, which will not be encrypted in the event of a malware attack. The system also provides for cloud-based restoration, or actually on-premise restoration, should we, should we be attacked?
Is that Datto, or?
Yes, it is.
So if the immutable backup is already infected?
If the immutable backup's already infected, it is an incremental system that goes back. You'd have to go back and go to pre-infection.
But if it sits, I'm just trying to go through the logic here. So the immutable backup is, is already infected, and it sits in the environment for the next year, two years, someone's patience. And we try to restore from a backup, they re-encrypt everything, because the immutable was infected to begin with. Is that a scenario?
That is a scenario. The, the, not, not just Datto, but the other cloud disaster recovery folks I talked to say, you know, as long as you've got 60 or 90 days, you're in, probably that's about the ROI point. Problem is, two years is a lot of data.
They sat in Sony Pictures' environment for over a year before they took them down.
Yeah.
Could, could I just offer a thought, maybe if, maybe after the meeting, could be an opportunity or another time to get into too much detail on the security side?
Oh, sure.
I, I have my old secure IT director hat from my prior life, and we typically keep the IT security details offline just for, you know, just helping not advertise.
Yeah.
Taking us a target.
Yeah.
They're good questions, though.
And I agree. So where I'm going with all of this, it's, you know, cybersecurity is the biggest threat that any enterprise or city is facing today, and the threats are increasing by the moment, right? Each month, you're probably getting hit with thousands of potential vulnerabilities and looking for the weakest points. And we need to ensure, no matter what we're doing and the investments that we're making, we need to ensure that we have a way of restoring all the data to continue to operate. And we could, you know, invest into networks and all these other things, but, you know, the biggest area, if you cannot recover, you're done. And so that's where our investment needs to go to ensure a guarantee that we can be able to restore services if we get impacted in the city. So I, you know, just a general updates, you know, I did, you know, on, on the master plan here. So I had the opportunity to review the 82 projects listed in the plan. And the plan is really primarily focused on internal city hall equipment and technology needs. The updates that were presented, you know, the city, you know, has made, you know, significant improvements in enhancing internal operations through technology and successful implementation of key projects, ranging from cybersecurity improvements and critical infrastructure updates. You know, however, we need to look, you know, to the future. We need, you know, we must expand our vision to leverage technology, not only to streamline city hall operations, but to drive meaningful change in how we serve and protect our community and using technology. And technology must be utilized in a transformative force for public safety, community engagement, and overall the quality of life of our residents. So by integrating systems, you know, like real-time surveillance with cameras in our parks and public spaces, and creating a dedicated police command center, we can create a safer city for our residents. Furthermore, you know, technology can foster inclusivity by providing accessible platforms like the dialling capabilities for our community participation in council meetings and ensuring that every voice is heard. To, you know, guide this transformation, I recommend the addition of a Director of Technology for our city, who will be responsible for overseeing the strategic direction, integration, and long-term sustainability of these technologies and initiatives. As we continue to innovate, we must focus on building a connected, resilient city where technology is not only used to support our operations, but also empowers residents, enhances public safety, and creates a thriving, dynamic community for our future. So council members, I ask you today to put an item in the future agenda to discuss the creation of a new position of Director of Technology for our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that was a lot of detail that you brought in, and I appreciate the explanation to us that are not high-tech. For a moment there, I have no idea what language you guys were speaking. And I'm glad that we didn't have to translate that, because I don't think she would have known to do that. But yeah, technology, the interesting thing about technology is that today you might have something that's really high, you know, advanced, and just as you install it, it's already outdated because something else has come up. And while you're trying to stay ahead, the people out there that are doing the hacking, they're finding ways of hacking your new system as well. So we always have to be on top of things. So again, I understand the, the interest of our, our city treasurer in bringing something forward, but we'll have further discussion on that. This one is a receive and file. Anybody want to make a motion at this time? Okay, I'll make a motion to receive and file. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abados?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Tado?
Yes. And we'll continue the conversation on the subject that, yeah, you guys talk first, and then let's talk, because if it's something that we have to do or can do, we'll, we'll see how we do that. You know, we always want to stay on top of things. Thank you so much for coming out here and doing this presentation.
Thank you for having me, and welcome to talk more, should, should the time arise. Happy to do that.
Okay. Consent calendar? Okay, we're being asked to take a four-minute and 30-second break. Okay, rock on. Okay, Madam City Clerk, we're back for consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 are consent calendar items.
Okay, let me open this up first to the members of the audience. Anybody wishing to speak on any of these 10 items, please step up to the mic.
All right, six, and maybe if I have time, two. Okay, so if I could just hit on again with the client-first technology consulting for IT project management services. So just a couple more points regarding this technology master plan. The reason why I came up with this whole phone-based call-in feature was back in April, March, I should say, I participated in two Metro Board of Director meetings, and what they do is they have a website. You go on their website, you're able to see their meetings on their website, and they also have the information to call in and give public comment. And when I saw this, I was like, this is the perfect solution right here. This is what the Metro Board of Directors uses as their setup for their meetings, for their Board of Director meetings. And I found out, because I participated in doing a couple of public comment with the LA County Board of Supervisors advocating for the West Endana Branch Transit Rail Line, which is now the Southeast Gateway Rail Line, to advocate for that when the, it was in front of the metro, for the LA County Board of Supervisors. So they had the same setup as the Metro Board of Directors with the phone-based call-in feature. Now, the other thing I wanted to hit on was, in October, this past month, we had two planning commission meetings, and Lizette Ruiz missed out on two of the planning commission meetings, and if we had a phone-based call-in feature, she could have participated, and, but, but there wasn't a quorum for the, the first meeting that took place in October. Luckily, they were able to have a quorum for the, for the second one, and those items from the first meeting in October were passed on to the second meeting. Also, for the first meeting for the planning commission, the chair himself, Jimmy Lozaieta, was MIA for that meeting. He was in traffic on his way, trying to get here to City Hall, and calling Ms. Elgira, telling her, hey, I'm not going to be able to make it. Sorry. Again, if we had a phone-based call-in feature, our commissioner could have participated remotely on his car drive into City Hall. So again, this is another reason why we should have this phone-based call-in feature. Now, now the number two. So, you know, I, I would like to know from, you know, the great Puto or Turo Cervantes, what is his estimation as to the completion of Urban Orchard Park? When is he gonna, is it going to get done? You know, next year, 2025, is going to be year three of this disaster. We're still no end in sight. When I asked the project manager, Gladys Deddes, for her estimation as to when she thinks Urban Orchard Park is going to get done, she said June of 2025. So I'm hoping that she's correct, and that, you know, the great Puto, Mr. Cervantes is going to be able to confirm that. But I want to hear his take as to when this thing is going to be done, open for the public, so we can make use of it. Also, back to the technology master plan real quick, the, the city treasurer stated Wi-Fi at the parks. Can we get Wi-Fi at Hoddle Regional Park, South Gate Park, Urban Orchard Park, and Caesar Chavez Parks? This would be a tremendous tremendous benefit to the residents who live around these parks of ours. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close the audience portion. Any emails?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So anybody have questions or concerns?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, if I can, take out poll item number eight. And then just also, just a quick comment for nine and 10.
Well, you can talk about them now. Yeah, they don't have to be polled.
So just a quick comment for items number nine and 10. It's, item nine and 10 are regarding our investment earnings during the first and second quarter of 2024. I just wanted to ask Wendy if she can give a little update if our investments did better than our projected numbers during our budget meeting?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Barone. This is the investment reports for fiscal year 2324 that we are bringing to council to report. The budget amount for fiscal year 2324 and the outcome of the investment earnings has exceeded what we budgeted. And so for 2324, we're still waiting for the financial statements, obviously, to give the official word. But from our actuals that I could see in our accounting system, yes, they are performing higher than budgeted.
Yeah. I think one of the things that I would recommend in future when we have these items in our, come up in our agendas, is that we actually highlight that in the agenda items to show that, you know, our projected amount was X, we did Y, we performed better than needed. And also, if we did not perform as well as we anticipated, we can also report that and know that, you know, there's a fiscal impact that we may have because of that. But I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I'll add that in the future to the fiscal impact section.
Thank you. And then just regarding, you know, item number eight, I did want to just have a discussion regarding the item. You know, having RSO be assigned, or I should say, have an MOU with St. Helens Catholic School, I think it's a great opportunity for the schools in the area. My understanding is the MOU is a requirement through the grant process that we received, the COPS hiring grant, that we have an MOU with a local school. And because we were able to get that, we were able to get the funding that was, that will be utilized specifically for a school resource officer. I do want to highlight to the residents in the community that all schools in the area were invited to participate. And because of timing constraints and maybe some of the change in policy that some school districts have regarding school police on premises, we needed to ensure that we did not lose out on this grant money. And we were able to get that done with St. Helens signing on to the MOU. They will be also, Chief, you can chime in if you can, they will be, this CRO, SRO, sorry, will also be utilized at some of the other local schools in our community as well.
Just to give you a, just a high-level summary, last fiscal year through the U.S. Department of Justice commite-oriented policing services, we received $100,000 to fund a school resource officer. And some may remember, maybe 15 years ago, we actually had funding for two school resource officers that were actually on LAUSD schools. And that gave us an opportunity to connect with the kids, provide non-punitive type of interaction, counseling, tutoring. It really did help manifest a really good relationship between the police department. It is true that COPS does require us to have a operational MOU with the partner school. We work with Southeast Middle School to get this. I'd mentioned it a number of times at our school collaborative meetings. And there seems to be a passion from the principals that were available to the students. When this MOU was presented through the principal, it went through the procurement department. And there were some language that went back and forth about what was comfortable with the city. I know that our city attorney helped draft some of the language that protected the city, went back and forth a couple of times. Eventually, it was, we got a response from the middle school principal that it was rejected from the school district. So at this point, St. Helens was more than happy to have us. That does not preclude us from going to Kip Corazon and other private schools. We will not be on LAUSD property. I've had several meetings with them, and it seems like there's this elephant in the room when I discuss this, and everyone knows it, that they don't welcome, it doesn't seem like there's a desire to have school police officers on campus, let alone Southgate police officers. So it's in the rearview mirror now. We have schools that will more than welcome our presence to do a lot of the things that engage the kids, do positive interaction. And again, this partnership is to really build that relationship between the police department and the schools and the students. And we've seen, there's a lot of positive results that come from those interactions. And it's not for a lack of trying. We've offered this to LAUSD, and this is where we're at now. So like to move forward. We have five years to spend $100,000. We've got enthusiastic group of officers that would love to be in the schools. And, you know, it's an opportunity for the schools that take advantage of that relationship that we're trying to build.
Right. And I want to applaud you, Chief, for, you know, bringing this to our community and to have this resource available to our students in the area. I do know that the relationship that the police officers have with our youth in our community is never in doubt, right? You guys go the extra mile every time that there's an opportunity to be there for the kids, whether it be the 9/11 memorial services with St. Helens, or the employee opportunity, or, you know, to talk about your employment with the local elementaries in the area. So the work that you do as a police department is commendable when it comes to our youth. So I'm happy that we're able to procure this grant money and have this resource for our community. But I did, I did think it was important to us to inform the residents that, you know, we did our due diligence and our best to make sure that this resource was made available to all schools in the area. Thank you.
All right. And I can follow with that, Chief. I do want to thank you for getting this grant. I was pretty excited when I heard that they were pursuing this grant. And yes, you did present it to the school sector collaborator a couple of times. But, you know, it's a shame that LA Unified School District doesn't take, you know, this kind of resources to schools. It's not for them. It's for the kids. Our kids would love to see our police officers out there. Not only when there is an emergency, but they like to see our office out there. Red Ribbon, what happened during Red Ribbon, a lot of kids were pretty excited to see the police officers out there. And I can say that, you know, I mean, shame to LA Unified School District. And I say LA Unified School District, this is not the schools. It's the district who's not allowing for these programs to be there. It's free for them. It's not something that they're going to be paying for. But I really do feel that, you know, unfortunately, the system is too much. And I keep saying, LA Unified School District is such a big, big gorilla out there, that we need to create our own district here in the city of Southgate. I think we have the schools and, but sustainability, they always say sustainability. But again, you know, our kids are not getting the resources that they deserve. That one our community paying for in taxes, we're not getting the same fair share. But I do want to thank you for continuing bringing these resources. And again, I would like to, for our city manager, to please make a letter, and I'll sign it myself, I don't know if the council members want to sign it, but that I am very disappointed, very disappointed that they did not take this opportunity to get those resource officers in our schools. Thank you.
And I would like to add to that, that it is a horrible shame and a disservice to our students in Southgate, just because we happen to be in the district of LAUSD. I would also concur with you, and I will sign the letter as well, that it is disappointing when our police department or our city is out there actively trying to get grants, to be able to be of assistance to students in our community. And we are constantly being told, thanks, but no thanks. But yet, the district does nothing to invest in our schools, in our city, to raise the quality of education for those students in Southgate. So they failed us before. They continue to fail us. But I think we need to send the message and hopefully start having those conversations with the new school board member that said that she was going to listen to us. So I will be reaching out to her, congratulating her, but also letting her know, I'm going to hold you accountable. You told us you wanted to talk to us. I sat down with her. I spoke to her. We'll see what happens. So, yes. Councilmember Barone, in regards to items nine and 10, and maybe this is directed to city manager or to the finance department, that maybe it should have been put in reports so that we would have gotten a full report on the investments instead of putting it in consent calendar. Because I think it is important that we highlight our financial well-being and the investments that are being made, that obviously we are getting a high return on. So I would agree with Councilmember Barone in regards to that, maybe just moving it into reports and recommendations and requests and not putting it in consent calendar. Because then it's just approved, then we don't hear about it. So with that, I'd like to make a motion.
I still have some comments, but we can make a motion?
To approve items one through 10.
I'll second.
Okay, and then now further discussion. So again, great items on consent. And a couple of things. I know, I thought you were, profanity was used, but a question was asked of the Urban Orchard. And I can't answer it because I have to recuse myself from that. The question was, when is that project going to be done?
Yeah, Mayor, I reported on that project earlier today, and I put the schedule up there. And the schedule that I presented was that we're starting construction later this month. I believe it's at the 25th, that Monday, and it'll be completed within five months. But I'd be glad to report on that project on a regular basis. Also, it's up on YouTube, and so the public can get schedule updates whenever they need them as well. But I'd be glad to continue to answer those questions. Thank you.
And my apologies to you. As, you know, people come to the mic, they have the constitutional right, when they're here, to say whatever they want to, even if it involves profanity and all that. In regards to the question about Wi-Fi, I had earlier mentioned that I attended a function, and I asked the city manager to bring back an agenda item that kind of addresses some of those issues with Wi-Fi. And so that is already, was already addressed.
Broadband.
The broadband, yeah. So, okay. And let's see, in regards to the technology, and again, I have, you know, I think our goal, when we sit up here, is to listen to the people in the community in order for us to know what they're looking for. But sometimes the things that people are asking for cannot always be done. And that's just the way it is. And as much as we like to, you know, technology is that so advanced, but there's always some flaws. We've had council meetings where our system goes down during Zoom, or the call-in features, there's nothing you can do. And we have items on the agenda that require that we take action that night. If the system goes down, we cannot continue with the meeting, because then it takes away from the people's listening in, you know, and we've had some very serious issues. We had an issue, I don't want to relive that one, but we had a member calling in, making a threat to another member of the community. And we didn't hear it in here. But you can clearly hear it on the recording. But again, I think it's that kind of thing that prevents me from pursuing wanting to go through a call-in feature. And I know that was part of an email that was read earlier as well. Until that technology catches up to the point where we don't have those issues, I will continue to say no to something like that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Motion was made by Ms. Avalos and Ms. Davila.
Al, did you want to say something?
Yeah, can I say something? Mayor, I just want to highlight something that Mr. Barone brought up, Councilman Barone brought up, regarding the investments. Wendy, is that, am I reading that right? The investment portfolio, we're making about $900,000, almost a million dollars for the three months because of our investment? Is that?
Yeah, so it's compounded. It's on top of our investments that we've made. So it's reporting the quarterly investment earnings, which is correct. So when you see the $900,000, almost a million for the two reports, it's not 2 million. So it's between, it's a rolling number.
Oh, okay. Okay, but that's a lot of money for that. Okay, thank you. And I just want to recuse myself from St. Helens, because I have somebody attending my family.
So that's the question. And I want to clear that up. When you're, when there's an item on the agenda, like St. Helens, that you have or know somebody that attends it, even if it's a family member, are they required to recuse themselves?
No.
You could still do it if you want to, just out of the preponderance of being over the top, but it's not a requirement. Okay. And I say that because I know Mr. Councilmember Barone discussed it, and I knew that there's no problem with it. And I don't want there to be some comment later on that he did the right thing and he did not. And I don't think it would be right. I think it's just a bad interpretation if we were to do that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Hios, will you still recuse yourself for eight?
No, I'll go ahead and go yes, affirm.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Ortado?
Yes, but I will be recusing myself on item number two. That is the Urban Orchard, and that's within 500 feet of where I domicile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now go to item number?
Twelve.
Twelve.
City Council will consider receiving and filing a summary of the state of Southgate Police Department's community engagement events for the calendar year 2024.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. During your strategic plan session that you conducted back in the spring of this year, we looked at your overall most important goals as you saw them for the city. And number one was your appreciation and value that you put into the connection the police department has with the community, and how that's very unique in Southgate compared to surrounding cities. So that pride in that relationship was important for you to maintain. So in speaking with the police chief, working with him over the course of this year, he strived with his staff to make sure that only got stronger. And so this is a summary to showcase all the work that goes on each year and this current year to build that strong relationship between the police department and our community. So I'll pass it over to Chief Aracon.
Thank you, City Manager. So I want to preface this presentation by reiterating what I've said many times, is that the strong relationship we have with the Southgate community isn't an accident. In the early 1990s, our department adopted the philosophy of community policing as this was the trend in American policing at the time. This concept was simple, get to know the community in a more meaningful way so that they have an opportunity to see us as one of them. But what exactly did that look like in the 1990s here in Southgate? I can speak from personal experience, because I was a member of the Crime Impact Team when the department rolled out the COPS program. We started working in the apartment complex in Area Four, known as the Pendleton Apartments. It was a complex that was in dire need of attention because of the gang and drug activity. That was a source of heavy police response that was a source of heavy police response by the Southgate Police Department. As we dug deeper, we realized that there were a lot of people that lived in that complex that welcomed our presence, and they opened up their doors to us, and they wanted us there. And many of you remember the late Mary Johnson, she was one that carried the flag for this COPS philosophy, and she was the one that just embraced us being there. It was the start of a lasting relationship that we had with our community, and since then, the Southgate Police Department community policing philosophy has grown exponentially through active community engagement events, supporting and connecting with our residents and business partners, which has been an important part of our identity. I'll go through a number of these events that we held this year to give you more of a high-level perspective, but as you listen to what I have to say, just know that this is really part of our DNA and really what we've done for the last, the better part of three decades. The first thing I wanted to do was talk about strengthening the trust and communication between the police and community members. Remember, what we do in the police department is relationships. Everything's based on relationships, and the stronger the relationships, the more trust that we gather over time. Many of you remember years ago, we started with the community, our Citizens in Action, and that was kind of like our staple. The Citizens in Action was really the genesis of our community policing. Since then, we've established a Neighborhood Watch program, block watch captains in all areas of the city. Right now, we have 110 Neighborhood Watch captains and 75 Business Watch captains. We've also done a number of Coffee with the Cop events, and always participate in the National Coffee with the Cop event. This year, we held it at the corner of the new Starbucks on Long Beach Boulevard. We do Citizens Academy and the CERT program. We actually have a Spanish Citizens Academy that's planned for the end of January. We're going to be rolling that out. We actually try to cram it into the end of this year, but you'll soon know that our calendar is extremely full, so we deferred it to the better part, or the later part of January. And we did have a CERT program October 11th through the 13th, and that was a Spanish CERT program. And that's a good program, because it gets community members involved in understanding the emergency management perspective of what we're doing. These are some of the photos that we've done throughout this year, and I try to keep these slides fresh so that it's a reminder of what we've done this year, but it goes back many years. When we visited Riojano Police Academy, that's when we took the Citizens Academy up there, and we gave them a little bit of, you know, knowledge on the range and what they do up there at the academy, because remember, the Citizens Academy is to give you a perspective from the world of a police officer and what we have to go through to make these decisions, helps them understand why we do the things that we do, the split-second decisions that are confronted with us, and it's nice to put them in front of what's called a FAP simulator, where they have an opportunity to hold a gun, go to a domestic call, and see how difficult de-escalating those situations are. You've heard this many times, "Why don't you just shoot them in the leg or the kneecap?" It's hard enough to shoot the target, let alone someone in the kneecap, but the FAP simulator gives a citizen a real-life look at how difficult it is during confrontational situations. We like to get out in the community. This past year, we had an event at Cake and Coffee House, and Channel 4 was there. They were highlighting the local businesses in the South Los Angeles area. They happened to be there, and they welcomed us to give some interviews and be on TV, and that goes to the bigger part of, it's not just us, but we like to connect and open up our business and showcase what we have in the city of Southgate to the rest of L.A. National Night Out, we just had that this week, and as Councilmember Barone had mentioned, the future leaders in the organization, while I was at our booth, where we were selling the Pink Patch t-shirts, we had two young kids come up and said, "I want to be police explorers." We just happened to have the Police Explorer blue next to that booth, and they were fingerprinting. So we explained the program, but it just goes to show you that we have to be accessible to the communities. When we're accessible to the community, it makes it so much easier for someone to come up and ask about the Explorer program, or how to be a police officer, or how to be, I become a parking enforcement officer. So I think the accessibility is half the problem, and we solve that by getting out in the community so often. This year, we did the very first Kick It With A Cop. Some of those officers are really good at soccer, and we got out to So5 Center, and they loved it. They think it's a great opportunity for us to bring that back annually, and just give us some time to play soccer with the kids, and that was a good event for us. Halloween Truck or Treat, I think this is our third or fourth year, and this thing grows every year. I do get an opportunity to talk to a lot of the families there. They feel extremely safe with us providing that environment. It's blocked off. We vet every single person that comes out. If you have a booth, most of them are departments in the city, but it's also our nonprofits and our, you know, the Kiwanis and other groups that we trust that will give out good candy, and it's just a good event that I expect this to be a staple in our department as well. And then we do participate in the JAA opening day. We always like to be a part of council members' events. We, just like this week, when we have our vehicle out there for cars, this is really what partnerships look like. We also have the Special Olympics torch, or the Special Olympic Games that happened, I believe, two weeks ago. Our POA was really involved in making sure that they were out there with the Olympians, and it's a big event at the park, and we like being part of that. We also do the torch run. We participate in the torch run. We take the torch from a neighboring agency, we run to the border of another agency and hand off to there, but usually we have an Olympian from the Special Olympics run with us at the very end. These are just photos from our National Night Out that we had this past year. Again, it just goes to the idea that being accessible to the community is the most important thing, and you can't do it with just one event. You have to, it's a force multiplier, if you will, by just getting out there, doing different types of events, but it really does give an opportunity just to open up and talk to us, no agenda, and it's just a great event. National Night Out was, we tried experimenting a couple different things with our formatting. We were taking out the National Night Out into the communities and trying to spread our staff between five communities. It didn't work really well, because everyone wanted our time, so we just brought it back to a central location, just like most cities do, and we have partners that come out. The news came out this year, US Marshals like to come out, a lot of different agencies come out to celebrate that night. We talked about the school and youth programs, the SROs, just another opportunity for us to get out there with non-punitive type of interaction, to help mentor, counsel, help students get on the right path. We do station tours all the time. We make sure that we get the kids to show them inside the station, show them a police car, go down the admin hallways, and really give them a perspective from the inside. Red Ribbon Week is October. You might recall that we do that in memory of Kiki Camarena, the DEA agent that was killed enforcing federal drug laws. That is a really big event that we do. This year, I believe we hit, we did, I want to say, 14 schools over a week period. We hit a couple of schools a couple of times, just for different classes, but they really love to see us out there. We bring the Canines out there, we ask them to pledge to stay away from drugs, and it's a good opportunity for us to at least let them know that this is an important week. Steve Coste and I are really passionate about the Commission for Southgate Youth. It's just hard to believe that we're already at the Pageant of the Tree time this year, but remember, when we do the Pageant of the Trees, we encourage departments to donate trees, or the Kiwanis and other members in the community to make a tree, so that we raise funds for scholarships. This past year, we did really well on scholarships. We had an opportunity to give away probably close to $54,000 in scholarships to a number of students. There's actually $54,500 to the high school students that were going on to higher education, and then $3,950 in Student of the Year awards for the middle school kids. And it seems like, maybe not a lot, but it is a lot of money to the students when we give them some of these scholarships. Some of the kids had $5,000 scholarships. That's a lot of money, and we're thankful that we have partners in the community that help donate to that cause. But again, we have Pageant of the Trees coming up. I know some of the council members have already bought their tables. We appreciate it. Remember, it's for the kids, like Steve says, it's for the kids. We do a number of other things as well, the etch-and-catch, the catalytic converter identification. This year, we work with the Regional Task Force for Auto Theft Prevention. We etch 85 vehicles with the help of Mr. Seastow and Public Works. We did the Autism Awareness Event, April 14th, to coincide with Autism Awareness Month. The DEA Prescription Takeback. Most people don't know how important that is, because prescription drugs, especially expired prescription drugs linger in those medicine cabinets, and if you don't get rid of them and dispose of them properly, they could get abused. So it's just a safe space for residents to bring their prescription drugs to the city, drop it off, and we dispose of them properly through the help of the Drug Enforcement Administration.
When do you have that event?
Various times throughout the year, so we try to get it a couple times a year. In fact, we're going to work on a stationary box to put in the lobby of the station. It's just easier, and you just do it year-round. By doing it, I think there's value in just having a box, so you can just drop it off whenever you want, but we're working on a box.
There is, yes, thank you.
And again, Family Day in the Park, we had 40 booths. Thank you for everyone that attended. The Domestic Violence Program, I don't need to tell you how important that is. I know that some of you attended the breakfast, and the work that Laura Maldonado has done with that program is just, you can't even measure how important that is. But we have, you know, the holiday breakfast that we do, the Mother's Day event, and we recognize them, and that's really part of the bigger program when we support and encourage them to, you know, work on themselves, and it's just nice when the city officials come to those events, because it's not just the police department, but it's the support that you give that encourages them to keep participating and be engaged in the program. I did want to mention, as I was going through this and typing up my notes, there's a lot more that we do. The Pink Patch Project, you may remember, the Pink Patch Project was something that we started in 2016. I had lunch with two chiefs, just talking about what we, let's help somebody in another agency, and we started that year with 12 law enforcement agencies in Los Angeles County that got a pink patch, Southgate being one of them, so we were the very first ones to help initiate that. We've got over 1,000 agencies in five different countries now, and the money that we raise have done a lot. We kind of did a hybrid approach. We donate some to City of Hope, we keep a lot of it here. We've helped bury children that have passed away from cancer. We've done fundraisers, and we've done stuff for our own employees here, and that's why I think that program is really another staple, and something that, for me, it's a legacy project, and I hope that when I'm long gone, that just continues. And then the car show, we just started the car show. I know everyone loves that. I love cars, I love bikes, and that's a really great community event that we're going to continue. We're going to get the City Manager to get a Harley-Davidson, ride one in one day. And finally, you know, we cap off the year with Santa Cop, Police Navidad, Pageant of the Trees. Last year, we combined the Police Navidad with the Winter Wonderland. I wasn't a big fan of it until I actually got out there and said, "This is actually kind of nice, because we're not duplicating effort. It's a big day that we do everything at once," and again, we're expecting that when we start pushing this out here shortly, that we'll get, like we do every year, over 1,000 toys given away just for Pageant of the Trees. These events are crunched pretty closely together in time. I know that Santa Cop, Pageant of the Trees, the Christmas Parade, all these are in the same weekend, but that's just what we do. But in closing, I can really go on further, but in closing, I really want to emphasize that this is our identity. It's just, we're more than just cops. We go out there, we do a good job, and we don't have the staffing that we used to, but for whatever reason, the Police Officers Association and the staff members and the command staff, we make this work. We're probably at the lowest staffing levels we've ever had since I've been here at the police department, but that's never an excuse. We've added a couple of programs this year, we continue to do that, and I think that's why we're respected in this community, and because we're able to provide these services, and I think that resonates through the business partners and our residents. I'll end there, because otherwise, we go all night, but I'll open up for questions if you have any.
You know, so I'm going to start it off. So again, I really appreciate the presentation, and you're absolutely right. You didn't even touch on everything. You know, you have the ride-alongs that, you know, people can go to, and I really encourage people to try to go, because sometimes I'll have a call, and somebody will say, "You know, I called, and they waited 45 minutes to get here," but they don't realize how many phone calls our dispatchers get on a daily basis, and when they're trying to prioritize them, well, it depends on what the call this person is making, is where they stand in terms of the seriousness of it. When the school police were removed, you guys need to step in. Whenever there's activities going on in neighboring cities, you have to lend a hand out there. Reading at the schools, whenever I go read at schools, there's a police officer also there in uniform, reading to the children. Career days at schools, yes, I had it in my notes, autism awareness, because my grandson's on the spectrum, and I understand how making people aware of this condition, whatever you want to call it, is people really need to be aware of, not how to treat the child, but how to teach other people to understand what autism is. You talked about the pink patch. One thing I want to talk about and just mention in terms of the simulator thing that you have, I'm going to use that, the example of, you know, I take a friend of mine to the batting cage, and he can hit that 90 mile-per-hour fastball, but you put him in a real game, and it's not the same thing. It's a different stress level. So when someone goes to a simulator and they think it's easy, and they're probably there, it's already a little bit difficult, but in a stressful situation, when you have a real-life event going on, it's not the same thing. You know, so I applaud our officers for engaging in all these activities, but I think the thing I wanted to point out, as a result of all the things that you guys have done, violent crime here in Southgate has actually dropped over the last 15, 20 years, and I follow those trends. The crime that has gone up are those crimes that sadly were not being addressed, and again, I know the votes are still coming in, but it looks like we're going to have a new district attorney, and he is vowing to address those things, and I think a couple of things that were on the ballot also changed how crime is going to be seen, and hopefully that allows for the deterrence of some crime. Anyhow, let me open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item, please step forward.
Okay, so this is community outreach programs, all right, so this is tangentially related, so please give me some space here, Mr. Salinas. So two council meetings ago, the chief made an announcement, and the mayor went around getting reports and updates, about how he received a letter from the FBI, and in the letter, it stated, this is from the director, you know, the top boss of the FBI, stating that they conducted an investigation about a trucking company that was transporting drugs into the U.S., and that they seized 362,000 fentanyl pills. So this is death, folks. Death is here, death is upon us. You take one of these pills, these fentanyl pills, and that's it, your ass isn't coming back. 362,000 fentanyl pills, 35,000 pounds of heroin, and 10 and 1/2 pounds of fentanyl powder, plus on top of that, 10,000 methamphetamine pills. So here's the thing I want to say to the chief. So why is it that he has to sit on his ass and wait for the So why is it that he has to sit on his ass and wait for the FBI director to tell him that we've been infiltrated by these these Mexican crews, these Latin American crews that are that abused Southgate now as a hub to transport drugs across the U.S.? You know, the chief needs to take a proactive approach and using his, our police department in rooting out the these motherfuckers. And I I would like to see a DEA Task Force set up shop here in Southgate because it's like, you know, if you've ever been to Chuck E. Cheese, like Whack-a-Mole, the little thing pops up, and you got to whack, you know, bop it, and then another one pops up somewhere else, and you got to bop it down. So it's again, you know, he should be able to really hammer down on these motherfuckers with these higher law enforcement agencies like FBI, DEA, and Customs Agents. And, you know, we have community development, and they have these, what was it, code enforcement officers. The chief shouldn't have to worry about the legalities of a search warrant when you have code enforcement. What I would like to know is, Ms. Alguirre, can code enforcement do surprise inspections on businesses, buildings, warehouses that law enforcement suspects might be a drug den operation, you know, for distribution of drugs? Can the the law enforcement use a bypass, using, you know, having to go through the legalities of getting a search warrant and just use code enforcement to do a surprise inspection on these locations, but then have like an army of like fifty or so cops as backup to say, okay, oh, you'll, okay, we're here to do a surprise inspection. Oh, you want to let us in? Okay, hit them with the tear gas, chief, and then just go in and raid them and and just do a surprise inspection to see what the hell's going on in these places that law enforcement thinks is, is, you know, running these operations. And, you know, the chief, we, you know, we pay the chief a very good sum of money. Hell, I wish I made half this man's money, so he needs to be on this. You know, this is a challenge for our chief, so we're going to find out whether or not our chief is a Superman or a superpunk. That's all I have.
All right, Armando Velazquez, Independence Avenue. Going back on the talk of the community outreach, just as someone who's been active over the last few years, I want to compliment the Southgate PD for everything that they've done. I communicate with a lot, with a lot of other community members from, that have their own police departments or the sheriff's departments, and oftentimes, they tell me how jealous they are of the city of Southgate because of the relationship that they have within the city of Southgate. So I just want to compliment the PD, Chief Arakawa, and then also, as a member of the Kiwanis Club, we've mentioned it before, you're actually going to hear from us very soon, but we're implementing a Kiwanis program that's not offered in every city, where we are awarding an annual recipient of a Heart of a Hero Award, going to either, well, a Southgate police officer and a Southgate firefighter for not just their performance as an officer, but also for what they do within the community, and that's going to be presented likely in December. You'll hear from us very soon. And with that comes a monetary donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the charity of their choice. So that's just to say thank you to the PD for all that they do, and looking forward to continuing as a relationship.
Thank you. Casey, no one else? I'm going to close the audience portion. Do we have any emails on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so let's bring it back.
No, I just want to, you know, thank the chief, but also thank Steve, and hopefully this year we'll be able to collaborate for December because a lot of the feedback that I got out in the community is definitely for Halloween, this was the place. Halloween night, not really a lot of kids out, this was the place. Same thing for Winter Wonderland. When is it going to happen? Are we going to have snow? Is the question? Yes, okay. So I know that a lot of kids are definitely going to come in, and the fact that you're going to be giving out the toys, I think, just makes it a very well-rounded event where the community can actually come out and enjoy it. Two folds, three folds, four folds, because it's not just for the kids, it's also for the adults and the fact that we're hopefully providing churros and champarrado to fill those tummies because winter is definitely here now. Thank you.
That is, I mean, just regarding the Winter Wonderland, it's going to be the same day that we have the lighting ceremony, Winter Wonderland, and also Police Navidad, and I believe we're closing California from Firestone to Adama. Yeah, so there could be plenty of games for our kids to play out there, so that would be wonderful. But to chief, I mean, you mentioned community in action since nineteen ninety-something, like if I could remember when that program started. And yes, it was Mary Johnson. I I remember Mary Johnson being very active with the police department. And just what the department, the chiefs that have gone through, and you have brought to our police department, the amount of events that you have with the community. And yeah, a lot, yes, a lot of the cities around us, even the sheriffs, I mean, they're they're envious of of this department for what they do with their community, how involved they are with our residents here in the city. And and all the officers, I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, it's during their own time. So I just want to thank you and thank the department for such an amazing time, but most important, what the children take from. A lot of our officers have become, a lot of our officers, which were explorers, now are officers, and that had to do with everything that the police department has done. So thank you for the presentation, great presentation, and I think that you guys are doing such an amazing job. So congratulations and to all the officers and the whole department. Just want to say thank you to all of them. Thank you.
I have a question in regards to that, the Citizens in Action Committee that was born many years ago. So has that been replaced, or can we restart that in the community?
Yeah, Citizens in Action, I mean, there's, there's residents that still want to call it Citizens in Action. Doesn't matter what you call it, it's just whatever community engagement. And there's, there's no, the reason why we went to the Neighborhood Watch is because we just were able to get the numbers out there because one block will have a certain set of issues versus another block. Like Community in Action, it was actually area, it was, is per area. So you had five areas that had probably a small number of people that were trying to steer it towards an entire area. It's not as effective as a Neighborhood Watch program, if you will. So if you, if you're in area, the eighty-one-hundred block of Seville, it's impossible for you to know what's going on up near Abbott and Long Beach. So that's why we went to the Neighborhood Block Watch model. It seems to work out, but that doesn't preclude the people that are near and dear to Community in Action to still have meetings. We still show up to the meetings. It doesn't matter what you call it, just stay involved, address issues, the concept's really the same.
And numerically, because I attended quite a few when it was Community in Action, and again, because there were just five groups, you'd get maybe fifteen, twenty people. So go with the high number, twenty-five, that's a hundred people. In Neighborhood Watch, you have a hundred groups alone, and even though you might have maybe fifteen people, the math there shows fifteen hundred people attending versus one hundred. So you get a whole lot more. But yeah, some people, they hold a Neighborhood Watch, but they insist on calling it Community in Action. I say, okay, it's Community in Action, but it's still just Neighborhood Watch, no matter what you call it. Mr. Brown or?
Yes, I I just wanted to, not, not a question, but just a statement and to say, you know, thank you to our police department, and I think that it's very important to make those connections, especially with our youth early. I think one of the things I learned as a young parent, I was actually at Toys R Us when it was still open here in Bell Gardens, and there was a police officer buying Christmas toys for his, his kids. And my daughter was acting up, so I said, if you're not careful, I'm going to tell the officer to arrest you if you don't calm down. The officer came up to me and said, hey, you know, you shouldn't do that because I want your child to want to know me and want to be respectful with me and and have a relationship with me, not to fear me. And it was a lesson that I learned quite early, and I said, you know what, officer, I apologize, you're one hundred percent correct. Let me introduce you to my daughter. And ever since then, I was aware of that, you know, you know, idea that we should not teach our children to be fearful of the police, but rather to understand how important they are in our community. So because of that, I I'm so proud of what our officers do here because they continue to surprise me every day on the efforts that they make to to make a positive impact in our community. So, you know, and I, and I know it stems from your leadership, chief, so I'm very appreciative of the fact that you're here with us, and it was an honor for me to sit on your interview panel when when you were able to be hired, and I'm so happy that you're still here with us. But thank you.
Councilmember Rios.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, chief, I'll just echo some of the accolades that some of my colleagues mentioned about the police department. It's good to have our own police department. It's very personal. It's good to have a lot of homegrown area recruits from the area, you know, that that are become officers and continue. So that's a good thing. A couple of things. One, you mentioned the Red Ribbon Week, and you said you were there in the schools. So why that in the schools and why not this resource, you know, is there, so, yeah, that and.
So the Red Ribbon Week is really a staple that we do every year. Principals invite us in. I can't explain why an MOU would probably startle the administration. I just, I can't answer that. That's probably something they'd have to answer. But we go in and we do a quick fifteen, twenty-minute presentation for Red Ribbon Week at the school. We pass out the red ribbons, and there's not a lot that's, there's, it's not, there's not a lot involved, if you will. There's a lot involved, but it's not like we're in the classroom. We do a big assembly, and the students come out to us, we talk to them, show them the dogs, let them watch, watch, walk through the cars, and that's pretty much it. I think that's low-level, you know, response that we need from the, from the schools, and they like to make sure that we're there.
Thank you, chief. The other thing is, I saw, I witnessed something I never saw, that so many young people with bikes riding through the neighborhood and like three escort cars behind police cars. And so I never saw that. I mean, I guess, is that a craze? That's a new thing? It seems like that's, it was just a lot of, I'd never seen that many bikes with kids going through our neighborhoods like this. Did you, were you aware of it that was happening this weekend, or?
It's not just Southgate, it's all over L.A. County.
All over the county, okay, all right. Well, to see it in your own, you know, I saw your house, it was, it was quite something. The last thing I'll just say is that, and it does give me some concern, you mentioned that the police department has the lowest staffing level, and as we approach the holidays, I know crime does increase during the holidays. And so how are we going to deal with that? I mean, because, you know, it just seems that ticks, you know, burglaries, different things tick in during the holidays, and if you've mentioned that that we have the lowest staffing level, that does raise some concern there, yeah.
Yeah, we, we have a deployment plan to send out what we call drone cars. We put cars in parking lots, really unmanned cars, but we're working with like the Walmarts and the people at Azalea, and we're at that point now where we're reaching out just before Black Friday. That's when we start engaging with the businesses and coming up with the plan. But a lot of the businesses have more robust security, if you will, that's helped us. They need to be eyes and ears for us, but, you know, we do the best we can, and we do educate the public about not leaving valuables visible in a vehicle, and it's, it's all part of our crime prevention campaign as well. So it's not just visibility, it's a combination of visibility, crime prevention, educating, working with the business partners, and we'll be fine.
And again, I want to thank you for communicating those things with us because I know I've had these discussions with you, right, about staffing, and you explained to me that even though the number of officers may be down, every single day, the amount of officers that are out there are the ones that are needed. So I, I don't have that concern, and I know that when there's holidays coming up, you add additional patrols. When there's a need, a special event, you have additional patrol. So there's never a day where you come in and say, well, we don't have enough officers, so everybody lock your doors, stay at home. There's never a need for that. So again, but also, are you still the president of the Chiefs Association, or is there?
I am, and that time's coming to the end, December thirty-first, and I'll be passing the mantle to my colleague, who is the Glendale Police Chief, Manny Sid.
Yeah, but that's a true, you know, example of how our staff here is viewed outside of the city of Southgate as well. So congratulations on a successful year. With that, I'm going to make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion and second roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dávila?
Yes.
Mayor Estado?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know, number thirteen.
The city council will consider ratifying the motion by Councilmember Maria del Pilar Avalos to remove Adolfo Vargas as her representative from the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay. Any additional comments, Ms. Avalos?
No.
Okay, let me open this up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item, please step up to the mic.
Okay, so I want an explanation as to what the fuck is going on with Adolfo Vargas. This man is like fucking yo-yo with our various committees and commissions. First, he was on the Tweedy Mile Advisory Committee Board, whatever the fuck they are, and he was on there, then he left, left that committee or the commission. Then he goes Parks and Recreation Commission, and then he leaves. And I don't understand why he did that because I need him as a commissioner in the Parks and Rec, a commission. He knows what I'm chasing after, he knows what projects I'm pursuing, and so I, I, I'm bummed out that he's not on there. And now the Citizens Advisory Committee, they oversee the CDBG funds. I need that money for plans and designs for a splash pad at Southgate Park, and now the fucker is leaving the Citizens Advisory Committee. So I want to know why Adolfo Vargas is like a pinball inside a pinball machine, pinballing, you know, bouncing around from commission to committee, all over the fucking place. I'd like to know what's going on with this guy. Now, unless Adolfo Vargas is either dead, in a, in a coma, or in jail, there's no reason why he can't serve on one of these commissions. I don't care if you got to throw a net over this motherfucker and drag him in into this, into this building, get him in here, put him on the fucking commission, all right? Now, the other thing is, earlier this year, you gave out certificates to Jennifer Seibert and Jose Delgado for their many years of service to our, was it Parks and Recreation Commission and the Planning Commission. And, and that's great, that's tremendous. These are the types of individuals that our council members need to be seeking and recruiting to be on our commissions. And the, one other point, you know, poor Lizeth Ruiz, again, she missed out on two Planning Commission meetings last month because, again, no phone-based call-in feature, and I, I urge, I demand the council members to give us that and to put that on the Technology Master Plan. And one more point here, what was it? You know, was that Ruiz? And, oh, yes, the, the question I have for Mr. Salinas. Can the city treasurer serve as a commissioner on one of the, on one of the commissions? Now, if there's an item on there, he can always recuse himself because of a conflict of interest, like the council members here do, but I want to know if the city treasurer can serve because he knows I want him on one of these commissions. So can you please clarify, is the city treasurer allowed to serve on one of our various commissions? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any other speaker? See, no one step forward, I'm going to close the audience portion. Any emails?
Yes, Mayor, I have an email. It states, could the city manager please clarify how Councilwoman Avalos has the authority to remove CAC member she did not appoint? I came across a post from former Councilwoman Denise Diaz stating that Councilman Estado had appointed this member. Was this information incorrect, or is there some misunderstanding, particularly given the timing of the election season? Thank you.
Any other one? You weren't a timer yourself, I like that. The first, so real quick, just to respond to some of that. Anytime we have someone that's appointed, our municipal code allows the following. Let's say that I have an appointee that Mr. Rios says, I want to remove that person, and I want to place an item on the agenda to remove him. He can do that. And then it's brought before the public here, but since- But since it's my appointee, he would require all four of the other members to vote to remove my appointee. And then they have the right to remove him. If I'm the one that makes the motion to remove my appointee, all I need is two more people to agree with me. Am I correct, Mr. City Attorney? I wanted him to say it nice and loud. He rarely says I'm right. And this would have been a good time for him to do that. But yeah, I know that Mr. Adolfo Vargas was not my appointee, though. So again, whatever was said on, people need to understand, social media is not a Bible. So whenever you're on social media and someone says that Gil Hurtado did this, and Gil Hurtado did that, and Mr. Rio said this, and Rio, doesn't mean it happened because you read it on Facebook. So if somebody said on Facebook that I appointed him, that's inaccurate. But in any case, here we are now. But there was a question to Mr. Salinas, I don't know. I thought so, yeah, it is. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. So we have an item on the agenda. Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Estado?
Yes.
And one last comment on this, just indulge me, I know it's late. When I appoint someone, I would hope that all my colleagues respect my appointee. It is my choice. And I can tell you that I have been here where a colleague of mine would appoint someone who I know has been aggressively insulting me on social media. But even though it was her appointee, I voted for him. And this was years ago, about three years ago. And I did it, and somebody asked me, why would you vote to, you know, allow someone who is insulting you? I said, because I'm respecting my colleague who has the right to appoint whoever she wants to. And so right here, whenever an elected official wants to remove someone, I may or may not want to, you know, chime in differently. But the fact that it's the request of the person who appointed him, I'm gonna respect that. And I think it's the right thing to do. In any case, okay, we have warrants, your turn. I'll read it into the record and then.
The City Council will consider approving the warrant register for November 12th, 2024. Grand total is $3,364,886.62. Cancellations are 104327, 104738, 104740, 105165, 105511, 107479, 10679, and 107909. Thank you.
Councilmember Barone, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and open it up to any members here in the audience who have any questions or comments regarding items here on the warrant register.
All right, so just some general statements here on the warrants. So, you know, at the last city council meeting, you know, Ms. Wendy O'Kelly saved Mr. Salinas's ass by stating that the payouts and settlements are included in the warrants. And, you know, but, you know, rather than disclose the payments and settlements when the mayor goes around asking for reports from the, you know, the department head, you know, Mr. Salinas, what does he say? He said, tonight, I have nothing to report. I mean, that's pretty pitiful right there. But he has plenty to report. He should be reporting the payouts and settlements. But instead, he's gonna have me look through the warrants because, you know, it's buried in a fucking item report for the warrants. And now I have to go in with a fucking magnifying glass to find this information. And have you seen the warrants? I mean, I'm sure you all have. And it's like the fucking Yellow Pages, pages and pages of information and all this little print. And I mean, it just goes on forever. It's like the Bible. Whenever I look at it, it scares the shit out of me. Because like, I'm like, is there any money left? Is there, are we gonna be able to pay our bills? I mean, this is just two weeks worth of payments, for crying out loud. It scares the shit out of me every time I look at the warrants. So it just shows how wretched and lousy our city attorney is that he can't disclose this information when it's time, you know, when the mayor goes around asking for reports and updates, that he has the information buried in a fucking item report. And here's what kills me, this man, we're paying him a shitload of money. We're paying you a shitload of money, and you don't want to tell, give us the information that I'm asking for. I don't think they're being out of line, you know, or outrageous in asking you to share this information. But the thing is, what was I gonna say? There was another point I want to say. I can't remember it. All right, I'll leave it right there.
Seen no one else. Oh, I'm sorry, that's your, it's your show.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Seen none? Any emails came in?
No.
No? All right, bringing it back to council.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How much did you contribute this time around?
How much did I contribute?
In tickets.
Not enough, I guess. But I will, I do want to make a point, and I want to thank Wendy for, last week, for my absence of not being here as the auditor. Thank you for excusing me, guys, and for stepping in and taking care of the warrant register while I was away. I will also say that the process of reviewing these warrant registers is tedious. It's something that I take pride into the time to do. Some days, I'm here on Saturday to review them, so that way that I can ask the questions that I need to by Monday morning, so I can be available to answer your questions here on Tuesday. We take this job very seriously, and this position is something that I take pride in and what I do. So I will say that, you know, the city does a good job of providing us the information when we need it. And we also have any questions that arise. I have never had a problem with receiving the information that I needed. So I'm very grateful to our staff and to everybody who's made this process very accessible for me to go through as quickly as I can. So thank you, guys. And I will leave it as that. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
I'll second it. And one quick comment, and Mr. City Attorney, you're doing a fine job. And if you were to come out of that room and want to disclose information that you're prohibited from doing so, which I know you won't, I will stop you in your tracks because that will be a violation of law. I'm sorry, you can't have the discussion from out there at this time. No, we gotta vote, yeah.
Councilmember Avalos?
Roll call, please, I'm sorry. Everybody was talking at the time, so I'll apologize.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios? Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Estado?
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, if we may, just adjourn. Several community members have passed away in the last two weeks. So if we could just adjourn in the memory of those that have passed in these past two weeks because of illnesses and complications, unfortunately, with COVID, since COVID is still here. So just be mindful, I know a lot of people are getting sick with the cold, but it's not your normal cold, that is, it's lingering. So please, please, please be cautious, wear masks when possible, being out in the community. Thank you.
And before we do go, I want to wish you an early birthday, happy birthday.
Yes.
So I won't ask how many years, because it's inappropriate, but you can always.
Twenty-one, again!
Oh, my lord. So happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you.
You guys can't stay here. We close up the building. You must leave.